Hall, this meeting of the Black Hawk County Board of Supervisors to order. Uh, roll call please, Mr. Jameson.
Hall.
Here.
Layland.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Tralca. Sure.
Here.
Here.
Oh, excuse me, uh, Dan. Yes, you are there, alright, just wanna make sure.
Eddie, okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Please join us for a moment, as I was to reflect on today's actions. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the review of justice for all.
First, taken a motion on the agenda received as proposed or as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Agenda is approved. Next we'll move on to public comments, if there's anybody in the boardroom or online who wishes to make a call to comment, please uh state your name and address.
Aaron Stacy Roberts, four eleven Almond Street, Waterloo, Iowa. Uh, Mr. Hall, I wanted to give this to you if not about you. And the reason I'm addressing you is because you kinda went in the same thing that I'm addressing. If you notice, these are some of the threats, these are just a few of the threats. These weren't the first ones nor were they the last ones. The last threat I got on Martin Luther King Day would be one year. And that was just basically, nigga, we gonna kill you through the text messages. This uh first text I showed you on number one, October twenty seventh of twenty sixteen, six forty eight in the morning. It mentions cutting off my new granddaughter's head. Uh, the second one, November tenth. She'll walk right in the house and put four in your head, nigga. Which was September twenty seventh of fourteen, seven fifty five. Says, you say God watches over you. Where was he that day in the bathroom? We could have taken her, she would have never been found. And what they were referring to was the case nine nine one four six one two that happened in Urban Dale, Iowa, that I am able to show now. Jody Van Velsen, who was a Des Moines police officer, as well as a National Guardsman, and worst of all, our landlord, played a part in intimidating my spouse and setting this up. It took the composite drawing and me being put in the prison system for a guy out of Des Moines to tell me the composite drawing that was taken of my daughter, or excuse me, of the guy who did that to my daughter was a Officer Charles Tedesco with the Des Moines Police. This is the concerns that I have been bringing down here for years. Like I said, the last threat that I got was Martin Luther King Day coming up on a year. The reason I'm here today is because I woke up and this was something while I was looking for something related with the farm, I ran across this, which was an unwanted recall and it brought me down here to ask you a simple question. I know that they have been threatening you and your children as well as the mayors, and I know the guy was caught. Did they, is that over with or?
It's still in process.
Still in process. The problem that I'm having, if you look at this and I want you to read it because I, what I want the county to do is I have been to Dan Treckle, who, I went to him before these threats started. And I explained to him what was going on. And what he, the number one thing I want him to get out of that and reiterate to him is what I said my weapon was. My ink pen and the thirteenth Legion of Angels of terror, death and destruction. And you can run all the way over there and they're waiting for you when you get there, Danny. What I would like for you to do is what I wrote at the very end of this, that I was addressing to the Waterloo, in Waterloo Police, who have completely failed to act and even acted against me just like the Des Moines Police in Urban Dale by covering up case nine nine one four six one two. If you will, please do what I'm asking at the bottom. And ask this call and ask for a federal investigation or inquiry on the criminal organization here in Waterloo, Iowa. Have a good night.
Alright, any other public comments in the room or online? Alright, seeing none, uh, we move on to the presentation. Uh, this is the twenty twenty five legislative priorities presented from Larry Murphy, uh, the Urban County Coalition.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
First of all, I wanna appreciate, th- thank you for allowing me to do this by Zoom.
Yeah, I'm gonna stop you for a moment, could, is there any way we can turn this volume up?
Is this better?
I think it's all over.
I do, I think we're on just a minute.
I think it's on our end.
Okay.
It's the first week of the new system.
Lot of echo.
I guess that's my question is, is there an echo coming across on your side?
There is not.
Okay. The uh, quick run through on the uh Urban County Coalition, uh, legislative priorities and, and Michelle and, and Supervisor Layland have been involved with that. The um, what we're seeking obviously this morning is just your support for those going forward. The uh, major change from uh what I presented at the, the legislative session summary is that with the state assuming the mental health funding, we're, that has always been one of our top priorities because uh so much stuff's being dumped on counties and without adequate funding. Uh, so we're assuming the state will do their job that they pass along in terms of funding. So we move that off the top priority, we will still monitor it, but we will also uh, you know, re- respond, you know, is it reinstate that if there's a need, but at this point, everything we're hearing from the Iowa Senate and the Governor's Office now is that property taxes in terms of the UCC issues, property tax is gonna be one of the main focuses for this session. Uh, not a lot of discussion about replacement of revenue. But the uh, at this point, we know that's probably gonna be front and center 'cause just since the election, the, the governor has been pretty vocal about wanting to do something on property tax. Uh, I think the, the key thing, the position we're taking, and this is not to uh advocate for changes for cities or counties, but because counties are the smallest portion of the property tax bill, uh, we want a holistic approach by the General Assembly. So they look at, you know, the education, the property tax piece for education along with, with cities, so that's all the players are, are, you know, on the docket for, for discussion. The other major change is the next, uh, on the category of unfunded and underfunded mandates is that the um, I'll draw your attention to two issues, one, and it, it's part of the reason the Urban County Coalition exists. Uh, the idea of being able to charge other counties for services provided by state agencies that are located within each of the urban counties. And as I've shared with you in the past, the Urban County Coalition was formed because at one time, going way back when I was actually a county supervisor in the seventies and eighties, every county had their own uh DHS office and other state agency offices. And then a series of consolidations over the last uh four and a half decades have concentrated those services or the, the housing of those services in the urban counties, even though they serve all of the rural counties as well. And so the cost of maintaining those services fall entirely on the urban counties. And so what, you know, position we've taken over the years is that to have the ability to do two things, one is actually bill the counties that are served from those agencies for some of the administrative costs that the counties provide. And then obviously, within that change would be a requirement that they actually pay it. So right now you can send them an invoice, but it's voluntary as to whether or not they pay for it. The uh, other piece of underfunded mandates, and certainly I would encourage you all to talk to uh your department heads, 'cause we really wanna keep compiling examples of underfunded or unfunded mandates on county government. And uh, part of what we are successful this last session is that we were able to get the County Treasures Bill passed, which provided an increase in fees, 'cause most of the fees that the county, various counties uh, uh, offices charge are set by law. And in the case of most of those, it's been decades since they've been updated. And so as we're looking at possible alternative revenue sources on the short term, looking at the services you provide, when was the last time those fees are adjusted? And then go ahead and, and uh try and get some reimbursement for those. Certainly, if there's any questions as we proceed, feel free to jump in. The other major change, and again, it's just more in wording, is on the section where we talk about county bonding. The General Assembly did uh increase the level of bonding for essential county purposes by thirty percent this, this last two years. But we're asking that that limit be raised uh to correspond to what cities are able to levy, uh, which would be five million dollars. 'Cause there's this convoluted sched- or uh, Schedule Four bonding based on county population valuation. And um, what we'd like to have is the, the same flexibility in terms of bonding and putting together capital improvement plans, that type of thing, as uh cities currently enjoy. And one final issue, and then certainly uh I'd be open to questions, is under the area of eminent domain. Obviously with the carbon dioxide pipeline discussion throughout the state of Iowa, we are proposing that the use of eminent domain still be made reserved for public entities and only for projects that are done with uh, with governmental entities and regulated utilities. But if, if the legislature decides to make some changes there, then we encourage the legislature to opt measures that ensure landowners are compensated fairly and that local fire departments are provided with training and equipment necessary to respond to what emergencies involving carbon dioxide leaks. The rest of the priorities uh, really reflect priorities that we've had in the past. And so with that, I'd be more than willing to answer questions.
Larry, any insights when there's been conversation about the property tax uh, adjustments, we'll say, uh, has that been specifically geared towards the business uh, property tax or, or just overall? I know, I know there was quite a steep hike for those business uh, tax. Because of the rollback, not the rollback, the um, what was it that fell off this year? Uh.
Uh, it was the rollback.
It was a rollback?
Yeah. Okay, the uh, first of all, the, there's two drivers on this whole property tax debate. One of those is the commercial industrial properties that the uh, that you alluded to. And the uh, and those have been pretty substantial in terms of valuation increases. Uh, the second one is the general struggle for most people to really understand their property tax, how it's assessed, and that type of thing. The uh, so on, on the local level, as much as you can in terms of educating uh local property owners in terms of the difference between the property tax evaluation and the actual taxable property value would help, it helped diffuse that a little bit. We, uh, Gary and I have worked with a couple of the legislators trying to get them to in that August statement that comes from the assessors. And by law, you know, as you know, it has to be based on market value, and this would include residential. Unfortunately, those numbers always go overwhelming. And so the people didn't have a hard time understanding that you gotta take that number and then subtract out the value of the equalization order, subtract out the credits for, you know, veteran, elderly, that type of thing. And uh, so that in the end, the actual taxable value of, for example, residential homes is uh about thirty to thirty-six percent of the number that they see in that August statement. And we've been trying to get the state legislature for several years just to put those estimates in that statement. So that when pro- uh, proper, property taxpayers get the statement, they see what the market value of their home based on what the law requires. But what their actual taxable approximate tax, taxable value will be uh, when you all set your levies and, and you assess against it. Um, hopefully, we can get, be more successful educating legislators on why that's important. And I think on, on your end, the more you can do in terms of presentations to business groups, uh, service groups, others, uh, you know, on what you all are doing, that you include in that just a kind of one-on-one on property tax. And I think that would help diffuse some of this pressure, 'cause if you think about the cycle for elections, August, just a couple of months before the election, this statement comes out with the market value of a home. And left as is, people's immediate reaction is, my property tax is too hot. So the uh, what we try to do is, is get, help property owners see what the true pro- property tax value, or the evaluation of property taxes will be in that statement.
Hey, I heard that there might be some Republicans willing to take up the I-Will funding. This year, I wasn't sure if you've heard any of those conversations and if you had, whether um it might end up being a net zero um game with um possibly defunding um DNR at the same level at the same time.
Uh, probably three, three parts to that answer. One, as long as Senator Dawson is in the General Assembly, and he's the Senate Ways and Means Chair, that idea will float because that's his uh attempt to do two things, to generate a sales tax in some capacity, to then do the I-Will a piece where three-fifths of the value of that s- sales tax would uh, kick in for the, for the I-Will uh funding. That has not ever had much traction because the whole idea, particularly game, got new legislators coming in and asking them to, in essence, quote-unquote, vote for a sales tax increase, when really it's a consolidation of the local options taxes. Um, politically is a pretty tough, you know, uh, volatile time. Uh, secondly, so the, answer your question, so there's always some discussion about, around that. Uh, the concern we have is exactly what you alluded to. The day that they start, they pass that, then the General Assembly can go in and write legislation in terms of implementation of that constitutional amendment. And that's where they could actually start uh redrafting the formula for the uh land legacy, you know, land purchase, all those types of things under that constitutional amendment. And that's where uh the, the, the DNR and Ag and Natural Resources uh Department, you could see a lot of money moved into there to basically supplant the state funding. So we do have concerns on it, so I don't think, and this is dangerous this time of year, I don't think that has the traction to, to move, but certainly it's out there.
Thank you.
Larry, my question was just gonna be regarding the tax increment financing. Obviously, looking at shifting some of that burden for replacing that revenue um to the counties would be great, but it's gone for so long and they haven't done that. Do you think our chances are very good of getting their attention to replace that revenue that's lost with TIF for counties?
Generally, there, there's a, I would say an interest in trying to help a little bit, but then when push comes to shove, the status quo wins out. So I, I think there, we could, we probably can play around the edges in terms of uh, you know, representation. I think the, right below that on the payment of taxes, you know, the, the better chance might be to get some funding from the state to back, pardon the term, 'cause you all had a bad experience with backfills, but to backfill what uh the various local governments miss out on. The um, but it's, when you, excuse me, when you look at the uh use of, of TIPS or tax increment financing in terms of economic development, it's pretty attractive for one of the future ones left uh for you recruiting industries and businesses. And um, so I, I think in the end, I don't anticipate huge changes. And then I just remind you as we wrap things up here is that when I talk about payment in lieu of taxes, uh, right now the state is sitting on approximately six billion dollars of unencumbered money. And not to get into the weeds too much, but that's because the General Assembly since two thousand seventeen has spent somewhere around eighty percent of the anticipated revenue every year, where historically, the General Assembly has spent somewhere between ninety-six and ninety-eight percent of anticipated revenue each year. Each one of those percentage, percentage points amount to approximately a hundred and fifteen million dollars. And so you can see that it, you quickly accumulate a lot of one-time dollars in the reserves. And that's why even though the state budget is between eight and nine and a half billion dollars, having six billion dollars that is not committed for anything but just sitting there, uh, they're in a position to help out.
Thank you, Larry, uh, we have any other questions? Alright, well, thank you, Larry, for being with us today and for all your work you'll be doing this session.
I think you mentioned Larry staying on until we took the most, in case there were other questions.
Yes.
He was free to go, he's gonna stay. Thank you.
Alright, next we'll move on to claims and payments, this is.
Move on to Schwartz, leave just one second to make a quick setup.
Okay. Alright, alright, we'll move on to claims and payments, this is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures, that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue payment against a various settlements of such claims as allowed.
So moved, second.
Alright.
Please read it.
Good morning, Board. Our total bill payment today is six hundred thirty-nine thousand eight hundred eighty-one dollars and five cents. And out of the sixty-fourty fund, we're paying two thousand five hundred forty-two dollars and sixty-nine cents. Some of the significant things we're paying today, we are paying our semi-annual interest on all bond issues. That is a hundred ninety-one thousand nine hundred dollars. We're making a payment on the Washburn Pump Panel project, thirty-two thousand four hundred twenty-six dollars seventy cents. Consolidated Communications is paying Riley's floors for some carpeting for about seventeen thousand, looks like. And let's see, ARPA expenses, we're making a payment for some IT things for thirty-two thousand two ninety-sixty-four. And the final payment, I believe, for the platform books of eighteen thousand three seventeen oh two. And really, the big one today is we are paying a hundred and sixteen thousand sixty-three dollars and thirty-six cents, all for elections, all for election support. That would be primarily to workers, but there are some other elections expenses in there as well. I think that's most of the significant ones, if you have any questions.
Hearing none, this is a resolution, uh, roll call please, Mr. Jameson.
Hall.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Tralca.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes, resolution is approved. Uh, next we'll receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning, Board, Kathy Nicholas, engineer. Uh, just a brief roads update this morning. Uh, the gravel roads are in good condition right now, we do anticipate uh being off the roads for a while just due to the lower temperatures. Uh, if the, if the weather stays cold, we will be done with blading for the year, of course, until we get some snowfall. We also have completed our ditch cleanouts. Uh, we, that is much difficult to do when the ground is frozen. We do come, receive a warming spell, then we might be back out and being able to complete a few shorter ditch cleanouts, but uh, we're probably off the roads now for a while until we get some snow. Can I answer any questions at this time?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, Board, Caitlin Emmerich with Public Health. Um, I just have a request for the Board to consider the um interview process for the Board of Health vacancy that we have coming up in January. I believe we've had a handful of applications, so if there's any input from me that you need or anything like that, just let me know.
Yeah, I was gonna do during um Board comments, actually, I was gonna ask for two volunteers from the Board to conduct interviews, so where you've got the person in place for the start of the new year.
Thank you.
Yes.
Uh, good morning, Board, Waring Giving Facilities Director. Um, might have noticed, we have a new AV system in today, um, and we have a room full uh working on some of the bugs. So bear with us and hopefully uh it'll get better and uh we'll, we'll get the system figured out, so. Thank you for your patience.
Any other department heads or elected officials who wish to provide an update this morning? Hearing none, we'll move on to the minutes approved from the November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Alright, uh, we'll move on to item seven, uh, uh, will be uh two hearings coming up later on in the meeting. Uh, hearing, uh, bid opening on Project LFM dash five oh two nine dash seven X dash oh seven, uh, ditch grading on Brandon Road. Uh, next we'll move on to cons- to the consent agenda, this will be approved the single resolution.
So moved, second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion or questions? Hearing none, roll call please, Mr. Jameson.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Tralca.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Schwartz. Yes, the resolution is approved. Section nine, uh, contracts and agreements, this is a resolution that the agreement received from Origin Design, Ute, Iowa, for professional services including bridge, piers, design and inspection services on the Washburn Road Bridge in Black Hawk County with a cost of thirty-three thousand one hundred dollars to be approved for the chair to sign for the same as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, County Engineer.
So moved, second.
So moved, second, Kathy.
Yeah, just a few comments, uh, this bridge what is uh our largest bridge out, out in the county, it is over the Cedar River, uh, just west of uh Gilwarkville. And uh, recent inspections by our consultant has showed that there is some deterioration of the piers right at the surface, the water level. So we would like to uh get uh those taken care of, it's, it's mainly concrete falling. Uh, overall, the bridge is in good condition, but this would allow uh to be, to take care of those uh issues at the water level. And this uh would pay for some design work to design the, the small project as well as inspect it when the work is going on. So I would recommend approval.
Alright, Board, any further discussion or questions? This is a resolution, uh, roll call please, Mr. Jameson.
Little?
Yes.
Chalca?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, the resolution is approved. Move on to other business. Um, item A, this is a motion to approve the Urban County Coalition, U C C, uh, twenty twenty-five legislative priorities.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Uh, there's any further discussion or questions? Thank you for your presentation today. Um, hearing none, this is a motion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Um, item B is a motion with the reappointment of Dr. Mark Bickley. As the Blackhawk County Medical Examiner for two-year term uh to expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Um, item C is a motion that the upon the retirement of Deputy uh Martin McDonald on December twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, he be gifted his duty service weapon, as is the policy of Blackhawk County to gift a deputy sheriff with his duty service weapon. Provided uh they leave uh the county in uh employment in good standing and through voluntary retirement. Uh, in accordance with the Iowa Publication Employees Retirement System, uh, established guidelines and regulations.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded?
Second.
Any discussion, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign? Um, item D, this is a motion upon the retirement of Deputy uh Reinhard uh Boshen. Um, on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, he be gifted his duty uh service weapon, as is the policy of Blackhawk County to give to Deputy. With a duty service weapon, provided he leaves the county employment in good standing and through voluntary uh retirement, according to the Iowa Public Employees Retirement System. Established guidelines.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Item E is a motion with the personnel requisition for uh human resources intern uh temporary. In the H R department be approved as recommended by Amanda Fezremeyer, H R Director.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Uh, any discussion, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Um, item F, a resolution to approve the Blackhawk County Regulation entitled Commercial Garbage and Trash Haulers, Chapter Eight Point Two O. That has been approved and adopted by the Blackhawk County Board of Health on October thirty, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Uh, is there any discussion or questions or any comments?
I think I'm gonna do a short presentation or summary.
Uh, good morning to the Board. I'm Jared Parmer. I'm the Environmental Health Program Manager for the Public Health Department. Um, I just wanted to say that this really is a continued effort uh by Blackhawk County Public Health to modernize and maintain our system of regulations here in the county for. For both health and safety and and uh, you know, the changes to this were were uh mostly cosmetic and kind of an updated thing. This this ordinance hadn't been updated. In two decades, so it was it was about time. So, uh, just so you know that, um, and uh, we'll see you again in January, hopefully, for another one of these, so, thank you.
I'm just curious, Jared.
Yeah.
Um, I know like you're responsible now in the Health Department is for the enforcement or kind of compliance of this. How how do you go about that or what's done, I guess?
So this largely uh coincides with our inspections that we conduct on trash haulers every year, so anyone who is doing uh like a licensed trash hauler. Licensed trash hauler business comes through us. We conduct a very thorough inspection of of their equipment, making sure that they meet requirements for that. Um, and then uh anytime we get any complaints or things like that of maybe people, you know, who could be driving down the road, spreading trash all over the community, we follow up on those as well, so.
So really, there's nothing done differently that you've been from what you've been doing, just the updating and.
No, not really. Yeah, we we've kind of maintained that and uh, you know, the work was being done, the ordinance just hadn't been updated, so. Thank you very much.
Hi, is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, this is a resolution. Uh, roll call please, Mr. Jameson.
Chalca?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, the resolution is approved. Um, item G, this is a motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing. Be held at nine oh seven A M on Tuesday, December tenth, twenty twenty-four, Boardroom two oh one of the Blackhawk County Courthouse. Three sixteen East Fifth Street, Waterloo, Iowa, on the proposed ordinance number seven seven dash two eight nine.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded? Discussion, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign? Uh, the motion carries. Um, item H, this is a motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing held at nine oh nine A M on Tuesday, December tenth. Twenty twenty-four, Boardroom two oh one, Blackhawk County Courthouse, three sixteen East Fifth Street, Waterloo, Iowa, proposed ordinance number seven seven dash two nine zero. From a request submitted by Andrew Shares at seven oh three one East Dunkerton Road, Waterloo. Uh, to rezone one point five acres from A Agricultural District, A R Agricultural Residential District, to allow for the separation of the home from the farmland.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Uh, any discussion, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign? Item I, this is a resolution to approve the minor plat request submitted by uh Jeremy Han. Uh, to plant, to platch three point two three acres into two lots in order to construct a new single-family home. Located at six one three oh Waverly Road, Zone A R Agricultural Residential District. Uh, pursuant to section three uh five four point eight uh Code of Iowa. And approve that the county auditor be directed and to certify a copy of this resolution for the Blackhawk County Recorder.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded? Uh, any discussion, questions? You can come on up.
Uh, just starting off with the planning staff, um, the three point three point two three acres in question are located at sixty-one thirty Waverly Road, approximately. Nine hundred thirty feet north of um the Waverly Road and Mount Vernon Road intersection. Um, the one parcel containing three point three two three acres is um been zoned A R Agricultural Residential. Um, since having been zoned re-zoned from A Agricultural and R S Residential Suburban on October twenty-first, nineteen ninety-seven. It is on A Agu- um agricultural to the east, A R Agricultural Residential to the northwest, north and south, and. R S Residential Suburban to the west and northwest. Um, um, the minor plot area is designated as residential on the future land use map. And a component of the um comprehensive plan of future land use um plan. And surrounding areas designated as residential, north, south, east, um, northeast and west, land and to the south. On the plot area is not located in a flood hazard and the applicant wishes to minor plat three point two three acres into. Two lots in order to construct a new single-family home, the parcel is large enough to accommodate one available lot in the addition to the existing home that. Will meet the lawn and size requirements for the A R A R is um agricultural residential district by being greater than one point five acres in size. And wider than a hundred fifty feet. The proposed location of the home is not in farm production and an easement will be included for driveway access to the existing home.
Uh, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, this is re- a resolution, roll call please, Mr. Jameson.
Paul?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Chalca?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, resolution is approved. Um, item J, this is re- resolution to support the sustainable Iowa Land Trust and the Circular Cities Project for Blackhawk County. Residents to encourage local landowners to to consider adopting conservation easements um where appropriate. Uh, to assist beginning farmers in growing food crops for local consumption. And challenges area businesses to collaborate with producers and strengthen markets for locally grown food crops within Blackhawk County. Be approved and direct the chair to sign for the same.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Uh, you wanna say anything today, Lori?
I don't need to.
Okay.
No questions?
Well, I guess you did meet with the city of Waterloo after the last time we had it on for the from the resolution, I think, and we were just wanting more information. So, did you wanna s- step to the podium, I guess, rather than speak from there, just to update the group, I guess, on. Those conversations or?
Uh, Lori Scoville from the Sustainable Iowa Land Trust. Um, upon your recommendations, we did do some further uh. Networking here in the community and we had very positive conversations to uh just can keep communications open as we talk about. Um, land use and um how uh, you know, we work with local farmers to be able to ensure that we have access to local foods.
That was with the city of Waterloo, I think you also met with city.
City of Waterloo, city of Cedar Falls. Uh, we met with obviously the Soil and Water Conservation District. Uh, we met with the Iowa. Extension um leaders, um N R C S, we met with some folks in public health. Um. We're we're continuing to meet with anyone who wants to learn more about uh the Sustainable Iowa Land Trust in the area. Thanks.
Appreciate that because I think we were new to the, I think, to all of it. It was one of the first ones or whatever too, so it was great.
We're very new to this area and we're we're very happy to be here and working with our partners, We Arrows.
Oh, I think this is exciting.
Thanks.
Yeah.
For him, I mean, land access is a huge problem for especially beginning farmers or people that didn't have land in their family to inherit at some point. Um, and so, uh, to increase the amount of uh food production in Blackhawk County is really, really important and aspirational goal.
Yeah, and and I appreciate you all meeting with and maybe dispelling some of the concerns um from some of those parties, uh.
I do too.
Community growth and and ag can work.
Hand in hand?
Exactly. I think we all have the same goal, so.
Correct. The economic development protection's lit up, so thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Hi, is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, this is a resolution. Uh, roll call please, Mr. Jameson.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Chalca?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Schwartz? Yes, the resolution is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, item K, this is a resolution with the lowest responsible bid received from K Construction, Alcatraz, Iowa. Uh, for project B R S dash C O O seven uh dash six O dash oh seven. Uh, twin box culvert replacement in Blackhawk County with a total bid of four hundred ninety-five thousand seven hundred seventy-four dollars and seventy-one cents. Uh, the engineer's estimate was six hundred thirty thousand nine hundred seventy-three hours and eighty-eight cents. Uh, be awarded and direct the chair to sign the resolution authorizing the county engineer to sign the contract or receive and place on file. Uh, the contractor's bond and certificate of insurance as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, County Engineer.
So moved.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, uh, Kathy?
Yeah, this project will replace a large box culvert on Dubuque Road, uh, just west of Camfield Road uh next summer. Uh, the D O T did open bids a week ago on this project and seven bid bidders participated. Uh, so we had a very good uh range of bidders and you'll see that K Construction was uh significantly under our engineer's estimate. So I would recommend approval that you um accept a bid from K Construction and that I be allowed to assign the contract.
So this is on Dubuque Road?
Yes.
All right, Board, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, this is a resolution. Uh, roll call please, Mr. Jameson.
Little?
Yes.
Chalca?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, resolution is approved. Um, item L, this is a resolution with the lowest responsible bid. Uh, or uh received from Aspro, Waterloo, Iowa, uh, for project F M dash C O O seven. Dash five five dash oh seven, H M A resurfacing and coal in place recycling in Blackhawk County. Uh, with a total bid of one million, uh, six hundred twelve thousand five hundred eighty-one dollars and eighty-six cents. Uh, the estimate was two million one hundred fourteen thousand and forty-three thousand, uh, four forty thirty-three dollars and thirty cents. Uh, be awarded and to direct the chair to sign the resolution, authorizing the county engineer to sign the contract. And receive and place on file the contractor's bond and certificate of insurance as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, County Engineer.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded?
Yeah, this will be our resurfacing project next year and it is on Tama Road from Dyzer Road to the the port city limits. I'm sorry. I forgot to include that in the gen item. It's about four and a half miles long. Uh, our engineer's estimate, as you can see, was two point one million dollars. We, the D O T did receive two bids, one from Aspro and one from Mathy. Uh, considerably lower than our engineer's estimate, so we are continuing to see um good prices on asphalt, so. I would recommend that you accept the low bid from Aspro Aspro Incorporated.
All right, any further discussion or questions? This is a resolution. Uh, roll call please, Mr. Jameson.
Chalca?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, the resolution is approved. Item M, discussion possible, board action regarding Windstream Phone Service Agreement Amendment.
Welcome, Board. Al, you, I T Director?
Uh, Rory Giving, Facilities Director. Um, this is a uh service agreement amendment to an existing uh agreement that we currently have with uh Windstream. Uh, the existing agreement was signed back in February of twenty twenty-three. Um, this agreement uh would be for sixty months. Um, and uh it is a essentially a lease agreement uh for our phones, our handsets, for our phone sets. Um, I wanna kind of take you back just a bit, uh, to back to uh twenty twenty-three when we were experiencing uh many issues with our phone system. Uh, with regards to decommissioning, I'm sure you all probably remember uh that fiasco, but um. What that did is it uh really kind of escalated things for us to start looking at what we needed to do. Uh, with our current system and the primary goal was to get off copper lines. Um, consequently, uh, that did take some time. Uh, we did incur some fees for uh remaining on copper. Uh, because it it just took a lot of time to get that switched over. Um, and so what Windstream has provided to us in this agreement are are two things. Uh, one is a uh. Uh, credits uh for the uh, I'll call them the T, uh, T D M rates. And uh that goes back to about uh the end of twenty twenty-three. Uh, we were actually getting charged an additional fifteen hundred dollars uh per for per facility. Um, that total amount equaled about a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars that Windstream has uh already started to credit back to our uh phone bills. It's already listed on our phone bills. Um, so that's what makes this whole uh agreement a little bit unique because uh we essentially won't see a bill. Uh, until towards the end of this agreement because uh we have to uh consume that uh that credit, which is a hundred nineteen thousand. Plus, they're giving us another uh a credit uh through uh uh twenty-four months. Um, on top of that, just for the inconvenience that uh we we saw during those decommission days. And uh trying to get expedited uh services and uh and so forth. And so, um, I'm gonna have Al talk to kind of the 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 benefits that we'll see from this system, which there are many. Uh, but I just wanted to kind of paint a picture uh of how long we've been working on this and uh how it started and how we got to this point. And uh, we do have a uh good team now with Windstream that has been working very closely with us for about the last, uh, I'd say, six months. Um, and uh, there's just been a lot of information back and forth. As you can imagine, it's a large system. And uh, we uh have been working very closely with them, but um. Wanted to to really point out those those credits because that is uh something that uh. Uh, for us was quite nerve-wracking. Um, you know, as we're seeing these uh penalties. Uh, and not knowing up until here, probably about a month ago, that these credits were coming back to us, so that uh. That did give us a s- a great sense of comfort because particularly uh on my end. Um, we are covering those additional costs under our operating budget, which we'll talk about later on today, so. I'm gonna have Al go ahead and talk about the benefits of the of the new phone system.
One question, let me tell you about the credits running out. When would payments actually start then?
So, uh, the the credit is a hundred and nineteen thousand, so that's gonna take us up to about uh a- approximately eleven months. Um, uh, that we will not see a bill. But then the other uh side of the credits are gonna run alongside those and those are through month twenty uh twenty-four. Um, so essentially, uh, well, after month twenty-four, uh, our phone bill will. uh our phone bill will then be at eleven thousand dollars uh a month roughly. Um where we're at currently is at four thousand. Um back when we were going through this decommission uh issue uh problem uh prior to that, we uh outsourced with a company called uh Marco for uh service for our phone systems. Uh we knew we were going to go to SIP because that's when ARPA discussions started, um and so we chose not to proceed with that uh service agreement, but that is about a fifty thousand dollar agreement, so what we did is we we take that fifty thousand and uh put that on top of that uh four thousand dollars a month and and realistically our our bill is gonna be about twenty five hundred dollars a month higher uh than what we previously paid at that month uh year after twenty four months, after all the credits have been paid back to us. That's about what we could realize is about a twenty five hundred dollar increase in phone service.
And this will be in maintenance as as far as your budgets or?
So the nice thing about this particular uh program too is they've outlined each department and the amount of handsets they have and so for our auditors, they'll be able to go down through that list and charge each department uh their rates for their usage. Um so no, it will not just go on to maintenance, it'll actually get charged back to each department uh which they currently do now, but it's a uh it's a cumbersome process for them to work out those percentages where how Windstream has this laid out uh will will definitely simplify that process and make it a lot easier for our uh auditors.
And the responsibility of the phone system then becomes yours?
But moving forward, IT is going to assume the uh responsibility of the uh the phone system. It it really should have been that way from day one and and that we've been kind of working together on this throughout this process, but we will uh start backing off of it and uh IT will start uh overseeing that, so. Um yeah, I think I've captured just about everything. I know it's very confusing with these credits and uh and the rebates, but uh uh it's it's been a it's been a challenge on our end too and just trying to kind of work through that process, but we feel that uh we're comfortable now. I I will say a a decision doesn't necessarily have to be made today. These rates are locked in until January third. Uh that's being presented to you, so if you would feel more comfortable uh looking at this proposal and asking questions, I'd be perfectly fine with that, although I know.
Well, there was a reason you were asking for it now, though I understood, right?
Well, the the one of the goals, uh one of the I guess the uh um positives about this system is when we start moving departments, uh this is essentially going to be a plug and play type system, so for an example, if a department moves like the treasures, they go down to the basement temporarily while we're remodeling their space. Uh with this system, they can literally take those phones and plug them in and uh it eliminates the programming that we would normally have to do, which is very time consuming um and sometimes uh a very com- uh not a very smooth process, so it does simplify that. Um and I'm sure Al can talk to that a little bit more.
Like the treasures office starts to move next this month or?
Uh we're gonna first of the year, we're gonna start moving them and so we're looking at about a sixty to ninety day uh complete turnaround uh once this contract is signed. Um so the sooner the better because then the bigger one will be then the Pinecrest project uh coming up. Um and that's where we're really going to see the benefits of this system.
Part- particularly with the Pinecrest building as as different departments on each floor gets displaced, it gets really complicated with the wiring. Um I won't bore you with all the details, but it it is it it equals a lot of work for IT for something that's temporary. Um but if we can have a new phone system in place, uh this is the system is called SIP, S I P, forgot exactly what it stands for, but essentially it is a internet based cloud phone. You can take that phone, you can plug it anywhere and it will work. There's no programming, it's all done from the phone. Communicates online, that's how it works. Um if we can have that in place before they start displacing each uh department at Pinecrest, that would be huge for for IT uh and just cause w- we don't have the capacity to run all the wiring to get the phone system working temporarily only to do it, change it over again as as the construction proceeds.
So if we do this, even if we did it today, do we have some kind of confirmation from them that we could have that in place? Those phones in place or for us to use in January?
We we did inquire, I think they're they're saying lead out times roughly sixty to ninety days once once a contract is signed.
Sixteen to ninety quite a bit from out of January.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so it's a good spread.
It's a good spread.
You know, there's a possibility because we're we're actually working on a a situation right now for a uh ADA accommodation and uh so we we purchased a phone set that is going to be the same identical phone set to what we're gonna be putting in. Um and we're able to do that ahead of time, so for an example um if we were to uh need to get treasures down to the basement, uh there's a possibility we might be able to go ahead and expedite that portion of of the project just to get that movement uh going. Um but full full completion uh sixty to ninety days.
And with these um this is these phones are kind of plug and play cloud base, I was thinking in case of like resiliency for different natural disasters or the emergencies that hap- happen.
Yep.
Um really, can they also work offsite? Do they have to be within the counties?
They they can, uh one of the benefits, uh not everyone will have access to this, but there is also what we call a software phone option. Uh so that gives you the ability to answer your phone either through an app on your cell phone or through your web browser uh simply with a mic and speaker on on the laptop or through a Bluetooth set uh or USB set. So um for the people that let's just say they had to get up, pick up and leave, can't take it anymore, they can still go home and and be able to answer phones from from their own device. Yep. Multiple devices.
That might be helpful for our new um hybrid work from home options that departments can offer, um okay.
Yep.
And there is also redundancy factored into this, so if the uh leading uh internet provider does happen to go down, there is a secondary uh uh provider identified uh to pick up that service if 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 needed, so.
Okay.
Yep, it eliminates the system would eliminate hardware. We have we have ailing hardware down down in the basement. Um and we would we would like to move away from that, so this would uh pretty much send everything to the cloud. There is minor equipment still left that just helps communicate it to the cloud, but uh beyond that, there's not a lot of the heavy lifting in in like Rory said there's a maintenance fee that comes along with all that equipment downstairs. Have to infer that.
Well, I would be ready to move forward today.
I'm ready to move forward. I was gonna say I don't, we don't only have any language for that amendment and the costs and that type of stuff.
No, and I'm not sure if the attachment, the the actual agreement was included, um.
The agreement was attached for us in an email.
In an email, yeah, so I would say uh.
Just seems like same terms in the agreement.
Right. So um effective date. I don't know, Mike would like language uh it so that the contract term length is sixty months. Um do we want to identify in this motion uh the rebate language in there or just the uh amendment to the existing contract?
Yeah, because the amendment, if memory serves, doesn't clarify the rebate part a whole lot. I I didn't appreciate that for my review of it anyway.
The only, the one thing I do wanna and and I don't think I spoke to you about this, but it is already identified on our phone bill. Um so we do have that uh actual verbiage on our phone bills that are coming in, so that credit shows.
So in other words, what we would be looking at doing then would be putting something in the in the new contract or the amended contract which states uh amounts payable under this contract uh with any amount to be rebated by uh the provider, by Windstream should be credited toward payments under this contract, right?
I think that would be.
And we can make that part of the resolution just to clarify the contract by adding that, I'm sorry Supervisor Little said something.
How about we just put all the language together that you want, put it on next week and then we know we're doing it correctly?
Yep.
That's fine.
I think we're gonna move ahead, but uh let's have the language for all.
I I I would feel very comfortable with that. I I would like to get that rebate language in there as well, so um the idea today was to really get it out in front of you. Like I said, a decision doesn't have to be made today uh that is locked in until the third, so uh we will work on that language and get it incorporated and uh get it back to you.
Very good.
Can I ask a question quick? This is Mike Kenderson, Director of Forest Conservation.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can you guys, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Um just wondering, do you guys explain how this is going to affect conservation? Cause you know, we've we're very frustrated with our phone system. We talked to you guys about it. Actually took it out of a budget two years ago and we're still, our Hartman our Hartman uh phones are basically uh defunct right now. We've got a long going in there, so this is, how does this affect conservation?
Um we, I think we intended to to deploy all the way out to conservation because we we understand that you've had that phone system for a while and it's it's aging, um and being that this is cloud based, um we can easily deploy that because it it takes any internet connection. Doesn't have to be tied back to our network.
So yeah, and so Mike, this this agreement that we're talking about today uh only involves uh the Pinecrest facility, the courthouse and the jail. But like Al mentioned, the idea is to get this started and then eventually would like to have it all be tied into one system, so uh conservation on airline, Hartman Reserve, uh rotary, uh secondary roads. Um that's kind of our vision being that it is internet based, cloud based, is to pull that all under one system.
Well, it sounds like one of them.
Sounds like a calling way to take.
Yeah.
Sounds like there's a lot of problems, why not?
But it's yeah, I mean, as long as it took us to to get to this point um for uh we would, I suppose we could go back, we just have to get phone counts and
Just increasing the numbers, they have to give us quote for.
I don't know if that uh lock, that rate lock in, if that would be uh something that we would see an increase in price. Um by January third, I don't think we could get this turned around that quickly, um with something we can certainly look at. But we're we're the read, what prompted us to really focus on these three sites were was the decommissioning. Um and it was the uh, in fact, we were decommissioned at one point. We had to go to the utility board to help uh get us back up and running and so our focus has been kind of zooming in on the facilities that have been impacted by the decommissioning, so that that's how that came about, but our goal is to uh eventually branch that out.
Yeah, but it does seem like it's later to address the needs out there. Not not just that that isn't a goal of ours, but I'm not because they've got problems.
I mean, it if if the board is okay with it, uh we would, I mean, I would love to support conservation. I can't speak for you guys, but if if you're okay with this we can certainly ask Windstream to increase the counts on on the
Yeah.
on the quote and then see what that looks like and then you guys can make an informed decision.
Yeah, I would I would like to see us just have this be universal across the county.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh when I think about it.
Yeah, there are other departments, I was gonna say, having issues like that as well?
Well, an EMA was was gonna get two phones for our agreement, but that's just something that they've been waiting for too, so.
Oh. Yeah, with that, yeah.
No, I uh if if uh if we'll work with Windstream, if this is something that we could pull off and maintain those rates, I definitely think that would be reasonable to to go ahead and look into that at at this point. Um it would have an impact on.
I think those rates and the ti- and the timeline, I think is not right, knowing that we've got some moving parts at I right in in existing buildings, at least maybe explore that conversation if it means we need to just move forward with this contract and sort of simultaneously start a separate process to handle conservation. I I I don't wanna, I don't wanna I don't want to bog this thing down too long so that we can't have the flexibility when we need it in terms of the building spaces and by adding one more, two more departments, but if if we can do all of it I think would be the preference, just generally when we know there's an issue and we're gonna open up sort of can of arms like this anyways, let's let's throw it all at us and then we can sort of parse out versus um.
Putting it off.
Putting it off and then we sort of get stuck.
Yeah.
Trying to put Humpty Dumpty back together.
Yeah, sure may, it should be great if we could do it all at the same time.
Yeah.
Yeah, so at least we can explore it.
Okay.
I know you put in a lot of time and effort into this.
No, I it's it might just be as easy as adding licenses, um and it might just be as easy as saying, giving them a count, um.
Yeah. Yeah.
Like I said, our our we were alter focused on keeping all three main facilities online because we experienced uh a little uh trauma from that whole process. And so uh we can certainly look and see what that, uh we do have Windstream online today. I don't know, Chris, if you could speak to any of this if it truly is just as easy as adding uh licensing and and phone sets. I'm not sure what that looks like.
So good morning, Board. This is Jeremy Carlucci, uh Director uh Sales over at Windstream. We, so what we could do with this, folks, is we can add, uh do what's called supplemental order, so everything would be under the same addendums and whatnot. We just add seats on that. You can do that in flight. So we can make those changes after or while the everything else is still flowing, so it will catch up with the order process. So we don't have to change the order that you have necessarily. We can place that, get that thing and get everything rolling and then place the supplemental order which will add those sites and those locations and that supplemental order will still be under still the addendum and everything else of the previous of the original order. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Should have maybe had him speak right away. Any further discussion or questions of this? Thank you. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, it is uh uh ten O seven. Uh this is a hearing slash bid opening of proposed project LFM dash five O two nine dash seven X dash O seven ditch grading on Brandon Road. Um first is a motion to receive and place a foul proof application of notice of public hearing.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye. Aye.
All as opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next is the motion to close the hearing after oral and written comments were re-received.
So moved. Sir.
Moved and seconded. Uh any written comments, Mr. Jameson?
No, sir.
Alright. Alright, um anything else? Okay. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All as opposed, same sign. Alright, the hearing is closed. Uh next is bids received and opened and read. The deadline was three o'clock PM, Monday, November twenty fifth, twenty twenty four.
We'll start with the electronic bids first. Uh the first bid is from Lodge Construction Incorporated. One hundred thirty eight thousand two hundred and eighty two dollars and five cents. And I won't repeat that because you can see it on the screen there. Uh the second bid comes from Beath Construction. One hundred sixty nine thousand two hundred sixteen dollars ninety five cents. Uh the fourth bid, excuse me, the third bid comes from Raffi Construction Company. One hundred eighty nine thousand nine hundred thirty five dollars ten cents. And then the fourth electronic bid comes from Boomerang Corporation. One hundred eighty three thousand five hundred eighty four dollars forty five cents. And that's the four total electronic bids. We have received two hard copy bids. Veracity Excavating LLC, they have submitted the bid bond per DOT requirements. Their bid one hundred forty three thousand three hundred sixty four dollars twenty five cents. One four three comma three six four point two five. And the sixth bid uh from Peterson Contractors Incorporated, they have also submitted the bid bond. Their bid one hundred twenty nine thousand nine hundred forty five dollars ten cents. One two nine comma nine. One, two, nine, comma, nine, four, five, point one zero.
Uh, next is a motion that the Board of Supervisors review and place on file the bids to allow time to review said bids as part recommended by Catherine Nicholas, County Engineer.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Aye. Section eleven, this is a work section on consideration of all aspects of the fiscal year twenty-six Black Eye County budget.
Uh, maybe a five-minute recess?
Sure.
Thanks.
All right, we'll take a five-minute recess.
How about somebody's?
I think I got it.
Sorry, I didn't reach out.
Were you still looking through, Amy?
Oh, this is clean. It'll roll noodle out.
Yeah. I got this one.
That's not, that's.
Uh, one of the last things we.
Two, you never responded to your, your question.
I s- I saw that.
So is that the one that goes to City Development Board on December eleventh?
Just spending the city limits.
That's grammar system.
It's just that when it was.
Black Eye County Board of Supervisors, we are now in a work session. Um, consideration of all aspects of the fiscal year twenty-six, uh, Black Eye County budget.
Yeah.
We're going to have Tim talk about.
Oh, okay.
Gonna do it from there or you want a podium?
Um.
Let's see if Michelle can say. Maybe it's probably Paige.
That would be fine.
I, I was just kind of asked to, uh, put together a little bit of information of potentially some of the challenges we might see in this upcoming budget session. Um, related to some changes in state law and also with our, or lack of in our tax base. Um, first of all, with the legislative changes, i- in my mind, that compartmentalized them this way. There are cases where the state puts money into the system uh, from their funds to help reduce property taxes. And some of those you might know, like the, the homestead credits that thirty thousand people in this community have, ag land, family farm credits. The state has decided they're going to put money in to reduce property taxes for property taxpayers. It doesn't hurt us at all because they send us the money to fully fund those. Uh, Larry Murphy earlier mentioned mental health. The state decided they were going to fund that. We no longer have to. In fact, we're, we're not even allowed to. So that's money the state puts in, lowers property taxes. Other things they do, um, is take money away from the system. Uh, things that maybe they used to fund and they stopped funding. And when they do that, of course, then we either lose that money, uh, or we have to raise our property taxes to make up for it or make cuts, uh, so that we don't raise those taxes. So just kind of against that backdrop, I'll jump into, uh, some of the things that we're looking at next year. Um, so, I, I don't wanna like beat a dead horse, but I have to go back to this to explain why it's affecting us this year. In twenty thirteen, the legislature put a lot of money into the state system, or to us, to help lower property taxes for businesses. One of the things they did was reduce the, uh, commercial industrial rollback, um, from a hundred percent to ninety-five and then to ninety. Um, in other words, if, if you had a million dollar business, it used to be taxed as if it was a million dollars. They came in and said, now you're only going to be taxed at ninety percent of that or nine hundred thousand dollars. Uh, the other thing that they did that year was introduce a business property tax credit, uh, which also reduced, um, property taxes on commercial industrial bills. It was an application process, but at, at a certain point, that was up to worth about two thousand dollars in Waterloo. Um, sixteen hundred dollars in Cedar Falls a year. Um, next slide. The beauty of those at the time for us was that the state agreed to replace all the revenue that the local governments were losing due to that ninety percent rollback. They would send us, uh, wh- whatever we lost because of that, they would send us. The business property tax credit, there was a hundred and twenty-five million dollars statewide appropriation that was used to provide that credit. The amount of the credit was actually based on that appropriation. They, they only provided the amount of the credit that they could squeeze into that appropriation. So again, that was money the state put in. It did not affect our budgets initially. Unfortunately, next slide. Um, in twenty twenty-one, they voted to phase out that reimbursement for the, for the credit. We called that the, uh, if you remember, everybody was saying they, they're not living up to their promise on the backfill. Um, but in twenty twenty-one, they voted to phase it out, uh, over five to eight years. The cities and counties depending on our tax base growth, tax base growth at the time. Uh, for us, that was an eight-year schedule, which I show up there. In fiscal year twenty-two, we got about nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. In fiscal year twenty-nine, we'll get a hundred and twenty thousand and after that we'll get none. Um, if you look specifically at fiscal year twenty-six, which is a budget you'll be establishing, uh, we're gonna get a hundred and eighteen thousand or about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars less than we got this year. So we know going in that there's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars that we will not get. Uh, next slide. They also, in twenty twenty-two, eliminated the business property tax credit. Um, and they replaced it with a kind of complicated two-tier rollback for commercial and industrial property. So instead of just being taxed at ninety percent of your assessed value, commercial, industrial and railroad property, the first hundred and fifty thousand dollars of their value is taxed at the residential rollback, which this year is forty-six percent. And then the balance of their value is taxed at ninety percent. So again, that created a shortfall in the revenue that we're going to get and the cities and the school districts are going to get. But what they did was left that hundred and twenty-five million dollar appropriation and paid for the, uh, uh, for the, uh, business property tax credits and said, we'll now use that to, um, pay cities, counties and school districts from the revenue that we're losing from that two-tier rollback. So it's another backfill system. Um, they didn't promise that that was gonna last forever. They did, uh, Legislative Services Agency projected that it should at least last two years and probably five years before it started to not cover the full amount in the window. Unfortunately, next slide. Well, I guess, first of all, last year was the first year we got the tier one replacement or the difference in that rollback. We claimed seven hundred and six thousand dollars. We got seven hundred and six thousand dollars. So it's fully funded. This year, we claimed nine hundred and sixteen thousand dollars to make up that difference. Um, we were notified two months ago by the Department of Revenue that there was insufficient funds in that hundred and twenty-five million dollar pool. So we were gonna only get eighty-one percent of that claim. And that's also applies to the cities that, that received that funding. Um, so if you take the hun- nine hundred and sixteen thousand dollars and eighty-one percent of that, that means we're losing a hundred and forty thou- a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars in revenue that we anticipated for this budget year. Um, we can't really say for sure what's gonna happen next year. Uh, it, it may stay at that eighty-one percent next year. It could go up or down a little bit. Personally, I don't think it's gonna go up. Um, but I also don't anticipate a huge reduction in that again next year. But, so you know, we lost a hundred and forty-two last year that we budgeted. At least that's gone, I would assume from our next year budget. Um, next slide. So House File seven eighteen, which was adopted in twenty twenty-three, uh, did a lot with property taxes and other areas, um, of, of local government. But one of the things that House File seven eighteen did was created, uh, a new exemption for, um, homeowners sixty-five and older. So if you, if you got a, uh, homestead credit and anybody who owns and lives in their house in this county can get a homestead credit. And it saves you a hundred and thirty to a hundred and sixty dollars a year, depending on where you live. But the only qualification is that you own your home, um, living it six months a year and apply. You have to apply. You don't get it automatically. Um, that's a billed credit from the state. So the state reimburses us all the money that we lose because of that. They're providing that directly. It doesn't affect us at all. But with the new exemption, they said if you're age sixty-five or older and qualify for the homestead, we're gonna take three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars in taxable value off of your bill. Now that's the value, not the actual taxes. But they took that off of your bill and then for the next fiscal year, uh, which is our upcoming budget, that's gonna go to six thousand five hundred dollars. Um, this is not a billed credit. This is money we lose. We don't get to tax for that and they don't reimburse us from the state level. So this, this takes money out of our, our budget. Um, along with that, they increased the military service exemption, which has long been in place from eighteen fifty-two in taxable value to four thousand dollars in taxable values, which started this year. Um, and again, we don't get reimbursed for those. So, um, so the impact of that, next slide. So for this fiscal year, for the budget we're working under, the value of those homestead exemptions countywide was thirty-nine point six million dollars. I will say I was stunned by the amount of that when I first saw it, but, but that's that three thousand two hundred and fifty times the number of those that we have. Um, if we were able to tax for that with our county tax rates, we would have received two hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred dollars, but we lost that. Uh, for the next year's budget, that credit doubled to sixty-five hundred and we had a few more applications. So that value preliminarily has jumped to eighty point five million dollars. And if you multiply that by our current tax rates, that's four hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars in tax revenue that we're not getting because of those over sixty-five exemptions. Um, next slide. The military credit, um, in the current fiscal year, uh, is costing us a hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and ten dollars. Um, that credit had been in place at half the amount prior, so we were kind of losing sixty thousand dollars before. Um, and did, there was a little bit of state reimbursement for that, but that's completely gone away. Uh, for next year, and I, I don't know why this happened, but we have fewer military credits. Uh, the taxable value decreased, so we're only projected to lose about a hundred and seven thousand, eight hundred dollars at our current tax rate. Um, which is actually is an increase, an increase for us because we're losing less. So, but, but not a large amount. Um, next slide. Should've got a water. Um, so another thing that House File seven eighteen did was, uh, it was a, uh, an attempt by the legislature, um, there were thirty counties out there that exceeded their three dollar and fifty cent um, general basic cap. There were things that, in place that allowed you to exceed it in emergency situations. But there's thirty counties out there that are above that and the legislatures wanted to find a way to bring them back down to that three fifty cap. Uh, in addition to that, they want, wanted to make sure, um, ma- I hope I'm not speculating too much here, but they wanted to make sure that if, if a county or a city saw a huge increase in taxable value, like we saw last year with revaluation, that the local governments just weren't gonna take full advantage of that, keep your rate the same and take all of that windfall in revenue. Um, so they put in place a system that essentially said, if you have tax base growth of under three percent um, for your general basic and in our case, uh, rural basic funds, um, you get to take advantage of that by keeping your tax rate the same and taking that extra revenue. But if you grew more than three percent or between three and six percent, they came back in with a, a factor that reduced your, your rate by two percent. So our three fifty levy would have gone down if we fell in that range, our cap. And then they also had a third category. If you're over six percent, they applied a three percent growth reduction factor. Again, wasn't going to allow you to take full advantage of a large amount of, of tax base growth. Um, we were at two perc- two point six percent last year, so this didn't actually affect us for this current budget year. Next slide. Um, in the last session in twenty twenty-four, they, they kind of went back in and were trying to fix some of the things that, that they realized weren't working right in House File seven eighteen. And one of the things was changing that ratcheting structure. Um, they added a different tier. Now, if you're two point seven five percent growth or under, you're not impacted. But then they've got a category of two point seven five to four where you get a one percent reduction. And then you can see it goes out, uh, two percent between four and six and three percent if you're over six. Um, we don't know how that's gonna affect us yet until we know what our tax basis is this year. Um, next slide. Um, uh, Tavis, you asked about the rollback earlier. And, um, so every year in October, we get a report or a, uh, order from the IO Department of Revenue telling us uh, how much we can tat, attack, uh, tax each class of property. Um, residential property, uh, is taxed, um, for next year at forty-seven point four three percent of their assessed value. So a hundred thousand dollar home is taxed as if it's worth forty-seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars. Um, agricultural property is at seventy-three percent next year. Uh, commercial, industrial and, and railroads are at ninety percent, except for that two-tier thing. The first hundred and fifty thousand is taxed at the residential rate. Um, and then utilities, which is a small class property, is taxed at a hundred. And I, I just showed the last three years worth there. And you can see, if you go back to fiscal year twenty-four, um, just look at the residential rate, was it fifty-four point six five percent? Last year, uh, for our current budget year, that dropped to forty-six percent. And that was a product of the large increases in assessed value that happened statewide. It forced that percentage to go down. Um, I won't bore you with the, the formula and the details on that. But if you look at what's gonna happen to us next year, um, show the next slide. Um, this is, this kind of shows how that rollback works in the current fiscal year. A two hundred thousand dollar home is taxed at forty-six point three four percent. So it's got a taxable value of ninety-two thousand dollars times our county tax rate, five hundred and twelve dollar bill. Commercial property of four hundred thousand, the first hundred and fifty thousand of that's at forty-six percent. The remaining two hundred and fifty of that is at ninety percent. If you then multiply that by the tax rate, it shows the tax bill. And then I did the same thing with ag at seventy-one percent. So now let's talk about what happens next year with those changes in the rollback. The bottom part there essentially just applies the new rollback to those same properties from before. And if you look, even if you leave your tax rate the same, the owner of that two hundred thousand dollar home's gonna see a two point three percent increase in their county taxes. Um, the business, you know, it's gonna depend a little bit on how, how valuable that business is. The larger the value of the property, the smaller that percentage increase. But on a four hundred thousand, you're looking at point six percent. And then agricultural property, um, with their change in the rollback, it goes up two point eight percent. And the reason I want to point this out is you have to understand, you, you can't affect that shift in the tax burden. You say, well, we don't want residential property to go up two percent. We only want it to go up, you know, we don't want tax bills to go up one percent. Well, that's gonna result in commercial being pushed down to a decrease, um, and, and ag will be commensurate at like, you know, two percent. So y- you don't control, um, whether commercial or industrial or ag go up more or less than residential. That's gonna be set by these rollbacks.
That's why we, last year, that rollback shift with commercial, we were kind of like, oh, but it was not.
Last, last year, what happened was a huge shift to commercial. Uh, that doesn't happen every year. The year, a lot of years prior to that, the shift went, um, from commercial to residential. But yes, last year was a huge shift to commercial. Um, next slide. Okay, so this is, this is, uh, an attempt to tell you what you're looking at for valuation growth next year. And that shows what happened last year. If you look at the total taxable value column, that is, uh, when you take the assessed value that the, uh, assessor's office puts on all of our property, you apply the rollback, you remove those credits and exemptions, you know, the homestead exemption and the military exemption, it's not the credits, the homestead exemption, the military exemption, that gives you the total net taxable, or the total gross taxable value of all the property in the county. So if you look at, um, twenty twenty-three, or twenty-four, which was last fiscal year, our total taxable value was six point five million dollars. Last year, there were the big twenty percent increases in assessed value, but then the big reductions in the rollbacks and then they pulled some of those exemptions out. We still saw four hundred and, almost four hundred and sixty mi- uh, four hundred and sixty million dollars or seven point one percent growth in the overall taxable value in the county. Um, however, the next column shows the TIF increment. And, and last year, a larger, much larger portion of the, um, total taxable value we saw was pulled off into the TICs, TIF increments in the cities. That went from six hundred and fifty-three million the year before to nine hundred and ninety-one, fifty-one percent increase. So of that four hundred and sixty million dollars of taxable value growth that we saw last year, three hundred and thirty-eight million. three hundred and thirty eight million of that went into the TIF districts which left a hundred and fifty one million dollars for the county to actually tax. That number, you multiply that one fifty one by your three fifty, and that tells you what you get for your general basic levy. You multiply it by your general supplemental levy, and that tells you how many dollars you get for general supplemental. So that's what happened last year, and that was that two point six percent, which kept us under the three percent. Um so we didn't get the ratcheting done to us, but so for next year, I've got part of that picture, and next slide.
Interesting, I think that's significant to note is if you were looking at our assessed value increase last year, that was like eighteen point nine percent. So our assessed value went up nearly twenty percent, and we could only use two point six percent of that, honestly, for our operating budgets.
Um so for next year, I don't have all the pieces to the puzzle, and that's why you have question marks. If you just look at the the first column, the total taxable value, and and these aren't final yet. I have till January first to finalize these, and there's still some things happening that are making some minor sh- minor shifts in that. But if I look at it as of today or or yes yesterday, it was a seven million one hun- or seven billion one hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And compared to the prior year, that's two point three percent growth. Now, and appreciate that we had that change in the residential and ag rollback, which which accounts for part of that. We also had some new construction growth, which accounts for part of that. We also have to remember they need to you need to take out that extra forty million dollars of homestead exemption because that homestead exemption doubled, so that's that's taken into account there. But when you look at all of that, our total taxable value, as it sits today, is looking at two point three percent. What I do not know at this point is what's going to happen with those TIF increments. Deadline for cities to to file their certification forms is next Monday. And then I have to do a lot of math before we get get to the final, but um you know, if if it stays at that nine hundred and ninety one million, um that two point three percent growth would carry forward into our, you know, into our tax base that we can tax. If the amount of those TIF increments increase, that two point three percent gets smaller. If they release some of that increment back into the general tax rolls, that two point three percent is going to get larger. Um but again, we just don't know that um yet. Hopefully next week I'll have a a little better idea.
And there are a couple that are up for a decision there, right? Not since they will, but.
No, 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 well, so so um there there's two ways that that value gets released. One is that the TIF district expires, and they after, for an economic development TIF, that's ten years for a housing TIF. Uh or for economic development, it's twenty years for a housing uh project, it's ten years. Um Cedar Falls has um had a TIF expire. Um it's kind of west of the Target Distribution Center out there, and that's um going to release, it it will, they've adopted the ordinance to release it, they've got their twenty years and and they, that's coming out, and that's going to be part of this. It's thirty six to forty million dollars of taxable value coming out. The other way.
That's for the upcoming.
That's for the upcoming year, yes, yes. Um the other thing that um allows that value to be released is if cities just don't have enough debt uh in their TIF district. You you may have the ability to have forty million dollars of increment, but if you don't have enough debt um to, that that requires that full amount, the the value is reduced to the level of debt that they have, so that can happen. Cities could actually request a smaller amount of of taxes from their TIF district too. Um Evansdale, the entire city is in four different TIF districts. They're really old, some of them. Their initial TIF was started in nineteen sixty eight. If that city chose and had enough debt to do it, but if they chose to take the full increment, that shift would be enormous. A lot of value uh would come out of our system and go into the TIF. They tend to only ask for about a hundred and or, well, in one of their tips, a hundred is that nineteen sixty eight went about a hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars a year, and they could get millions, so. They they've already turned in their certifications, they did not. The potential's out there that something like that could happen. I I mean, I don't spec- expect it to. Um it would hurt their general fund as bad as it would hurt ours, so they they wouldn't, I don't think that they would. So that's about it. I did have a couple more slides. Oh, these are just some some odds and ends with Senate File seven eighteen. One one of the things we have to do that's new this year, that we've never had to do bef- before, is submit a second set of valuations to the Iowa Department of uh Revenue. They they want to know what is our new construction as opposed to what is just our increase in value, because some of it's going to be from uh the assessor's office saying that your property is worth, needs to be valued higher to be at market rate. Um that's what we saw a lot of last year with those twenty percent increases. What the legislature wants to know is what what part of that is actually new construction? We're going to tell them that. There's nothing in the law that says they're using that for anything now. Um I think if you think long and hard about it, you could come up with ways that they may want to use that in the future. We do have cities out there that have seen some significant growth that got limited by that ratcheting factor, and they're saying, hey, we we've got a a giant factory that got built on the edge of town that brought in that value, and we're having to provide services to that. It's unfair of you to limit our growth. You know, you should look at our new construction as well, so again, it's it's a lot of uh, it's a lot of work for the assessor's office and some for me this year um to submit those, but that's going to be a new piece of information that will be out there, that may come into play in future. On the rollbacks, I I I'll mention this, one of the things Senate File uh twenty four forty two did last year was started a a reduction in the rollback on utility properties. They've always been at a hundred percent. Um they're going to reduce it to ninety eight two years from now, ninety six the year after that, until they get to ninety. This is a really small, it's it's gas pipelines and gas production facilities, not mid-Americans natural gas to your house. If the two percent two years from now at our current tax rate, it would cost us, it would it would be about seven thousand two hundred dollars in revenue we would lose. So not a huge thing, but it's it is another reduction we're looking at. Budget property tax statement, which we sent out last year from House File seven eighteen uh in March, we have to do that again this year. It cost us twenty six thousand dollars last year, and I'm assuming it's going to cost us at least that much again this year. And the last part is um cities that have uh urban revitalization areas that give tax breaks for new construction, like if you Waterloo, if you build a new house, you get three years with no taxes on the increase in your dwelling. Uh starting next year, not this coming budget year, but the year after that, if you have one of those, you'll have to pay the school portion of the taxes. Um doesn't really impact us, but it will be additional revenue for the school districts. And that's about it. Um one last slide, I go you go. When when I was looking at what those homestead exemptions were costing us, I was shocked at how many of our homestead credits were people that were age sixty five and older. We have thirty one thousand four hundred and twenty homestead credits. I have one, anybody that owns our house and has signed up one gets that. Of that, twelve thousand two hundred and fourteen of those were people aged sixty five and older that are now getting the exemption. That's two out of five people that, assuming everybody applies for the credit that's eligible, two out of five people in this county that own their home um are age sixty five and old. And and I was stunned by that. I I thought that would be a lot smaller, and so wondered if it was just us, so I took the ten most populous counties and looked at their percentages. Uh we are the highest at thirty nine percent, and and you can see it scales down to Dallas County, where only one in five of their homestead uh credit holders is age sixty five and older. I don't know what that says about our community, if we're if we're just an older community. Um younger people tend to rent, you know, they're not buying homes as much, but do they rent more here than they do in Woodbury and Johnson? I'd be surprised if that's the case in Johnson County. Anyway, I just found that interesting. I also wondered if it was an urban rural thing, so the last slide. I looked at the counties around us. Uh Buchanan was thirty seven percent uh homestead exemptions to credits um down to Tame at twenty nine. We were still higher than those, so just thought it was interesting and would pass it along. And I think that's it. I hope that's it, because I got dry mouth. Finally, um so we were kind of asked if there was anything on the horizon that the legislature might be doing next year, and I think Larry Murphy spoke to this as well. Um our I Iowa State Association of County staff have told us that the the legislature and governor uh definitely are looking at this session as a as a property tax year, that they're going to do something related to property tax. We have heard also that a lot of legislators are open to fix some of the un- unintended consequences of the the past legislation. There were some some very specific um proposals from specific legislators about further reducing the commercial and industrial rollback. Again, if they backfill that, it would probably be good for a while. If they don't, that's revenue loss. And then last year, there was a bill uh that attempted to limit growth in your assessed value on a parcel level. Right now, um it's supposed to be set at the market level, so if your if your house is worth a lot more uh than it's assessed at, it can jump up twenty, thirty percent. There was a proposal that maybe they would limit the amount it could go up in an individual year to three percent. And that was uh that was out there, it was defeated, but um something similar to that is still being tossed around at the legislative level, and that's kind of all we've heard about, so. I don't know if you had any questions about any of that. Apologize for running through it fast, but we've been here a long time, so. Thank you.
Tim, please send that to us electronically too, so we have that scribbled all over. Can you send that electronically to us when you get it? Are you still getting quite a few calls on the um from the people, from the commercial businesses that that were getting kind of hard?
I got a lot of calls when the tax bills went out, but not so much lately. I I did get a lot of calls when the business property tax credit went away, because you know, they saw that, why did I lose this?
To to Larry's point, though, I think. We should probably budget next year to have additional communication with folks ahead of their tax bill explaining what this rule looks like. We're not, we're not disallowed from the legislature from doing that. Yeah, something.
Alright, so I I was just asked to share some information that will affect our budget, so this isn't necessarily from A to Z. We're just going to talk about some topics that came up. One of the one that's apparently a lot of people have been wondering about is how we ended fiscal twenty fourth, our general fund unassigned fund balance. Um we did increase by about six hundred thousand to twenty eight and a half million. I was almost surprised by that. I I will say that if we had chosen to fund all the capital requests that you approved, we would have, we would have dropped to twenty seven million had we done that. Uh because the way it works, you reserve that now when the year you make the decision. Um so.
Is that was that two and a half million?
It started at two and a half million. We had already said we would have to fund a million of it from fund fund balance, so the additional is the one point five, yes. And I'm just projecting that it will maybe fall a million in twenty twenty five, and that's, I started out assuming that if we didn't use that turnover factor, basically, there's there's other things that feed into it, but to make, that's just an assumption that I made.
So that's based on everything that we typically have done previously, except the turnover?
That would be pretty much what, how we budgeted for this year, including that every position was filled every day. That that's, yeah, which we know it isn't, right? But we also know there's other fluctuations. Tim earlier talked about at least one that we expected a hundred and forty two thousand in revenue that we're not going to get, you know, there's budgets are estimates and plans, so they don't come in exactly. But um that's, and we we can talk more about that when, maybe when the audit is delivered, that's a this is still a preliminary number, but I feel fairly confident with it, the twenty eight point five.
And you said, I think you got a draft or something of that, but are we close to, like, did they send you the final?
I I I do not have the final. There's one or two pieces of information we need to get yet, but we are very close. Yes, this'll, um actually, the team did a great job this year. We, I think our we should be, assuming we get these last pieces um put together, I think we're about a month ahead of um where we've been the last several years, like getting it delivered. Takes a lot of work, it's been a lot of hours, but I think we are making good progress, so that's great news. One of the other questions that I've been asked um deals with debt service. What happened here? There was a slide there this morning. Interesting. Well, it's all gonna be like, I'm turned up. I know, you're seeing a lot of things you really don't want to see right now, but that's where we are, I guess. Let's see if we have another one. Let's. Press your fingers. There we go. This is what was supposed to be there first time. I don't know what that was about. I had to get this all set up ahead of time so we wouldn't have these problems, but I knew I'd be cursed today. So our debt service levy, this is the sense on the tax levy when Tim was, you know, saying that our rate was a five fifty three. A portion of that is what we use to pay county-supported debt. And since twenty twenty one and actually since twenty sixteen, it started falling. And um it, so it it continues to fall. We had a slight bump up in fiscal twenty two for some reason, but we've been on a downward trend right now. So for the fiscal twenty five budget, we were only taxing sixteen cents on our levy. And I I have been, while I'd love to never have to have debt, the risky run with letting that go to zero is then if you want to borrow money, you're going to have to bump your rate up. So I prefer, in a perfect world, that we could keep that rate or amount somewhere in a relatively stable um setting, but we had a, got a deal, the cards were dealt, so. Let's see, we can find next year. Oh, I know this isn't going to happen with everything now. Oh man, okay, well, here we go. Um here we go to debt history now. We just had the same problem with it, not having data on the screen. So this is the dollars in debt being repaid with county funds over the last five years. These are, so that top blue line is our, and it's only the principal, and it would only be for roads and other county CIP projects, so things that the county is truly paying out of our levy. So it does not include youth issued bonds on behalf of the E nine one one board that they're repaying. I I've just taken that out of here. Same thing with solid waste bonds, because those are paid, they pay those back out of their fee stream. So this is only what I call consider county debt. And you can see how that has fallen since twenty twenty one, and there there is another complication that I did not try to break out on here. A lot of that was for roads. That top blue line, most of it is roads. And we also were dedicating fifty percent of the local option tax that we collected every year was going to repay Rowan Bonds. So it that's why when you look at the bottom line, the red line, amount of of to that we repay without roads is much smaller, because we really didn't borrow much. Um that typically has been for county buildings, equipment, that kind of thing. So I just I think that was significant to understand how how that works. Now what has happened the last couple of years, because the roads portion was declining, if you'll remember, I believe two years ago, I asked you to open a if we could open a separate fund for local option tax and stop depositing it to debt service, because I didn't have enough debt in there to repay with local option. So we and and I had we had talked to the county engineer and they did not have road projects that they wanted to bond for at that time, so I I had to do something. So we opened a fund, we started depositing local option there, and now we can do construction directly with local option, which means we save the interest, we never have to pay interest, because now we're using it a hundred percent for construction.
Are we limited on the use of those funds just on roads or as we talked about potentially for building with that department? Do we have flexibility with those dollars here?
Well, we we will, I think we should consult with legal again. The the local option referendum was passed in twenty twenty three, and it was recommended here not to change the county language. The county language specifically reads fifty percent for property tax relief, which the board has historically deposited directly to the rural fund. And the other fifty percent, the language specifically says it is for road and bridge construction. Many other communities and I want to me county is one, that they just said it was for roads. So it left a lot more open for interpretation. Um our I'm I'm sure I discussed this with our bond attorney, and I know things philosophies seem to be becoming less conservative, but um I personally would think if we wanna use it for a building, we might want to have another vote to change the language to allow that.
That would reduce the amount that we have available for roads, so.
Potentially, you would, cuz you would be changing the use. Yeah, I mean, it's used it's used then to support roads, you know, not necessarily for direct construction, but you would be supporting roads.
Okay.
Yeah, if you chose to do that.
But there is potentially some. There is some interpretation there. Right, that that is that is that kind of what I'm hearing, is that?
Your question, potentially, because it would be used for road and bridges building type of thing, okay, I'm trying.
Potentially. Interpretation, correct. Correct.
It's just that our building, it supports maintenance of roads too, not not only construction, so I I think the fact that we use the term road and bridge construction is a little more um restrictive than if it just said roads, so that is that's just something we'll have to consider.
Captain, any I was gonna say experience or from with other counties or conversations or anything as far as uh something similar or?
Yes, I I would agree with Michelle that um those counties who at least as far as the limited amount of research I've done, those counties who are building new buildings, some of the the referendums didn't specifically say operations include bridge and road construction and operations. So I I haven't researched all the referendums or all the all the entities that have that do receive local option sales tax, but I know a few of them, the larger ones, Lynn says operations.
Is that, do we know, was that changed that were made later? That they maybe started out as construction only and had that, the I'm or is it, I don't mean to put you off by.
I don't know.
Okay, I just wondered if that was.
I don't, certainly can't find some of that stuff out, but I don't know.
Started out.
Or. I I appreciate these these two, the the debt service slides. Um wondering if you if not doesn't have to be today, but if you can also demonstrate what we're looking at FY twenty six through twenty nine, what we're what we're scheduled to pay back, so we have an idea moving forward. Sort of how far this is gonna dip and at what point are we at zero, which I I would probably argue is not a great place for us to be because of
Yeah.
when you need to come back up, that's when folks get that whiplash to be able to create some consistency. Um having some projection for future years of what that that debt service rate is looking like um with existing debt, it would be helpful.
Yeah, I think I'd have to add another row on.
Yeah.
Here, you can see in FY twenty seven, it says the annual change is about three and a half cents, but the new one is fourteen. That would tell you that's cutting it about to nothing, cuz I I think our county supported debt will be paid off in twenty twenty seven.
Right.
If we don't borrow anyone.
I think uh thinking about what um kind of that that level line that we wanted to be at for for supporting. Um cuz I I have a feeling that more and more of our capital is gonna be supported through this every year um because of limitations we face with um state code changes, but um.
Maybe, and remember, one of the things I and Larry, I don't know, I I did talk to you with UCC about this, I don't I don't know if it ended up in the final priority, but one of the things that happened when they did increase the uh the amount that we could borrow, it's kind of a hearing setting, so the amount you could borrow for a specific project, they did increase that Larry referenced this morning, they increased it like thirty percent. So that did go up, I don't know, a few hundred thousand for us maybe for one project. But they also took, you know, they tend to not give without taking something away. And so they took away some language that allowed us to bond for particularly for equipment. That is where we are gonna have a sore knee going forward, because even if we wanted to bond for it, currently, we're not able to, the the laws are written. And and that will get us to another exhibit we're gonna review in a minute. So this kind of showed if we borrowed and these, you know, were early projections, so I was trying to suggest the amounts we might borrow annually to fund those, what was in the CIP, which I was going to try to show you, let's see if we can do that. It's really gonna be blank again. Yeah. Ah, that's laid plans, right? So this is a summary of the five year CIP that our department submitted last year. And I gave you the simplified format, so this this doesn't break it out. There is another format that shows this broken down between what could be bonded for and what could not be bonded for. And that's not in this version, but fiscal twenty five, you can see the total capital requested was almost two and a half million. And the choice we could have made, well, actually, you did you sort of you voted to approve all the capital projects, you did vote to um expect to bond for the ones that were eligible, but we wanted to wait and do two years at a time um to hopefully improve the bonding situation, so that's why we have not had a bond issue yet. That's why you haven't had more resolutions from me yet, which you could choose to vote no and not bond. So that that will all have to come right sometime later.
Do we know for sure it's two years too? Could it be three? I was just curious, I was thinking about.
Um but.
I'm I mean, depending on.
It it's, you know, the longer we wait, we're gonna be down to a zero levy, so.
Oh yeah, I didn't mean that, I just mean is two a firm number, or is it whatever works for?
No, but I mean that. I I don't know that it's a requirement, I I can tell you that I was hoping I would like to see us do that before the end of June of twenty twenty five, and the reason is the departments are moving ahead doing these projects, right now, we are paying for that with general fund dollars. I would like to get my bond money in before the end of June, so that I can have all that paid out of bond money. And that's why I brought the resolution that you approved a couple of weeks ago to reimburse ourselves, if we hadn't done that, I wouldn't be able to do that. But we did that. It it's all to protect our general fund and to be able to use bond proceeds to do it, which again, you can choose to do it or not do it. I'm just trying to preserve the flexibility.
You can pull or remove projects from it, I there was like a lot of two million or something, but I just meant it it covered all those, so we did have the ability.
Yes, we could. Right. However, yes. Yes, that was what I was attempting to do anyway.
No, no, sorry.
So. Yeah. And you can you can see with the CIP request, um except for fiscal twenty six, and that is um primarily starting the building. That was if we did the building for roads in twenty six and twenty seven. But exclusive of that, we are generally needing about two and a half, three million a year right now, that I was um I was actually quite surprised when those requests came in, before I even filtered through them, the totals are fairly consistent with the exceptions of the building, that's kind of a outside of our typical CIP type of thing. So let's see.
Now that I have.
It's so discombobulated. We I don't think we looked at the schedule if we had the building, I also last year had done. Keep trying.
Well, we've got A and F, so you.
I know, but it's just.
I can't remember.
Um try this, here we go. Your time's a charm. So this exhibit kind of builds on the last one, you you got two exhibits about debt eligible projects. The first one was trying to show you our typical CIP. This one added a building.
Yeah. Yeah.
So you can see how much it's going to continue to grow. If we have, you know, if we choose to use debt to do that, you're gonna it's gonna be a significant increase to the tax levy by fiscal twenty eight and twenty nine, should we choose to do that. I mean, I use twenty eight and twenty nine on here. I don't know when we'll actually start it, so you you know, it would all be all that we actually begin construction and borrow the funds.
Isn't that fund where we're putting dollars currently, the the local option?
Yes.
What's that, what's that fund that? Just looking at a looking at a seven and a half million dollar
Well.
uh engineering building, just wondering where that fund is currently.
It's so and we we would need to be a little careful about that because at the end of June, I I think it was somewhere in the neighborhood of two million, and I I'll have to double check that, cuz I don't remember. But we we do need to be careful to keep some cash flow in there, because local option it while it is paid monthly, our construction season isn't necessarily monthly.
Yeah.
So sometimes, and I've noticed sometimes when we have awarded projects that we call the next fiscal year, for example, they might get started on construction in May, and we might be, even if we're not paying out the cash, we may be accruing expenses that are gonna lower that balance at the end of June. So I I do think we would want to determine how much balance do we need in there for cash flow? And then if there's funds that might be available for something else.
Can we bond against those dollars?
So if you're asking if we can repay debt with those dollars, we yes, we can.
Yeah. So it doesn't have to all come out as a lump sum, to your point of keeping a balance there.
But it has. No. But it would have, but the debt would have to be for eligible purpose.
Okay.
So be and you.
It it becomes that issue of of that interpretation.
And we've exactly, and that's why we've done that before, we have borrowed, we have issued bonds for roads, and then the way that it has historically been done at the county is we we just always deposited half of the local option tax revenue directly to the debt service fund to repay that debt. So yes, we we can we can absolutely do that. Yep. Alright, so let's talk, see if I can. Suppose this was gonna be blank too. Yep. Alright, well.
Funding rates, that stays about the same, I mean, we heard anything different on that lately? Just guessing.
No, I didn't have a chance to ask, the feds have ticked down the prime rate, which the fed funds rate, which generally does impact us, so I think I would expect it to be slightly lower, and when we sold bonds last summer, I believe it was well, it's interesting, I think it was a little higher rate than I expected, but we got quite a premium, so I think we netted out maybe around three percent, and I would expect it to be slightly lower than that now, but it's it is difficult right now, we have so many changes coming that I I don't have a good first of all, let's put it that way. We'll just have to.
And our reserves help us have a pretty good bonding rate typically too.
Oh yeah, absolutely, you know, it's it's same way
Substitution.
same way in your personal life, if you have the money and you don't need to borrow it, they'll loan it to you and they'll loan it to you cheap, but when you need to borrow, then you're gonna pay more. It's just kind of. So so one of the things that we talked about a little bit last year, right back to our first slide, we have the twenty seven and a half million, or I'm sorry, twenty eight and a half million in fund balance, I did update this slide to show the June of twenty twenty four fund balance. And I I think there was general agreement that's higher than we need. We still have to determine what we are comfortable with um as a rate. When I just, well, several things happened last year that made me do this analysis. So first of all, we hit that three dollar fifty cent basic levy rate cap that um Tim referred to earlier. And can no longer fund everything that was requested in our normal operating budget. Then we have had enough growth here and enough other changes, things I mean, something that impacted your budget was selling Country View. Yes, you got cash from it, yes, that went into the general fund, but that also changed your expense landscape, right? So it gave us, I think, a few years of ability to tax per employee benefits, because we removed a chunk of employees. So we have, if the board wants to continue funding all the operating that you're currently funding for twenty five anyway, we could not fund all the capital that was requested. So you had, we had options, you could have either chosen just, sorry, not doing that capital project. And we we didn't do that, you did approve all of them. We could have cut or changed, I'll use the word change, changed how we funded or what we funded in the general fund for other departmental operating things. Or I I tried to come up with, how do I best preserve our operating expenses with what the departments are telling you they need, and how do I get capital funded? And we ran into the issue, well, you can't just bond for everything that I would consider a capital project, the legislature doesn't hasn't authorized you to do that. So that is why we get this kind of complicated exhibit. And as you remember, we also started under budgeting expenses by a million dollars a year. That was our estimate for turnover. Because during for the last several years, and maybe partially during because of the pandemic, I I don't know, could be partially how how we were estimating pay increases, you know, it it's difficult to pin down exactly why now. But during the pandemic, your fund balance grew annually a really large amount, so at least one year is three million dollars, which there's really no reason to tax people for. So I'm trying to, I'm trying not to tax more than we need. And we decided that we know we had turnover, so we put in the million dollars. So I'm kind of reserving that here, because I do, and I think we're seeing that start to change, that maybe was unique to the pandemic. And you're gonna have spikes in that periodically going forward, but I don't know it's necessarily gonna happen every year, and we're gonna look at a slide that talks about that in a minute. I so this slide, I tried to take the capital requests that were turned in in the five year plan last year. I broke them out as to what was eligible funded by bonds, what was not eligible to be funded by with bonds. So on the FY twenty five row, if you see that, um if we had funded all our capital from fund balance, that would have been that two point five three three million, you see that about in the middle of the page there? And what we what we have done at this point is we have only assumed we're gonna do a million and twenty a million twenty four out of fund balance, those are the items Those are the items that our bond attorneys at that point told me were not eligible for bonding. I need to revisit them about some public safety equipment, make sure we got that in the right bucket.
Just gonna say, what kind of things were those?
Um mostly equipment again, because equipment equipment, if they consider it more of a maintenance item than an actual renovation to a building item. But it's primarily certain types of equipment that used to be covered in this catch-all bond language in the code that went away. So that so we could bond for about one point five million of the two point five and the million we had to cover out of fund balance. So I kept that process going for the five years and tried to show what we could do and I picked a target that I left very high. And I I did that for a couple reasons. One of the things that happened the first year I was here is we had an opportunity to purchase a building um at eight twenty nine Sycamore. And you know, we had enough fund balance. We didn't it it gave us the flexibility to jump on that opportunity. We didn't have to say, oh, we'll think about that in a year when we sell bonds or you know. So I would like to keep some kind of strategic reserve for opportunities like that. So I did not wanna go to the lowest percentage there was. So I'm using probably forty five percent on here. But if we would just fund the capital that was included in last year's version of the C I P, if we do that all directly from fund balance, no bonds and I'm assuming that our regular operating budgets are gonna take all of our capacity. That's another assumption that you don't know till you get there every year. We would not even be able to do that for the full five years. That we would be down to that forty five percent by fiscal end of fiscal twenty seven. So by fiscal twenty eight, you would I you know, assuming things don't change, you you would have needed to do something about bonding anyway. Just bought you a few years. On the other hand, if we start bonding now for the pieces that are eligible, we can get out to about fiscal thirty before our fund balance gets down drops down to that level. And again, that assumes everything else remains the same. And we know we know it won't remain the same, right? But it's the best information we had at the time. So that was that was the purpose of that uh spending plan.
And the Sycamore building, did we do that both there? We looked at the purchase and then there was gonna be some funding for us to do the improvements and we get
Yep. Well, we we've discussed the improvements. Um we've there's I don't believe there's been any formal action taken on the improvements.
No.
Um so like yeah, that those either need to be incorporated in a five-year C I P, for example, or you would need to take separate action and we would have to fund them out of fund balance, one of those two.
Just because I know the ARPA projects have kind of got us too late on moving forward that and so.
Yes. Yes, and we're gonna have exciting news coming very soon on ARPA projects. But yes, that has taken all our capacity right now, plus some, I think. The next thing I wanted to share is now maybe I'm just gonna delete all those right now. To work better. Now we'll see if I can open the right one. Okay, so as I alluded to earlier, we were we were reducing our tax levy by a million dollars, assuming that we would have turnover. Um I I was actually kind of surprised when I ran this final report. We actually did not have a million dollars um available this year. Our salaries in total left, if you will, the leftover in the budget instead of being a million, it was only six hundred and seventy five thousand. So we actually were three hundred thousand dollars less than what we expected for this, so that's significant. The other significant item on here, two things. Probably wouldn't normally give you all this detail, but I think there's two things that are important to see. Overtime at seven hundred and seventy six thousand, that was that was the significant amount this year. And I think that's gonna be primarily due to vacancies and probably mostly in public safety. And so when when you operate a twenty-four seven facility, if you don't have new employees, your existing employees are working a lot. And I think that is clearly shown by that. And we also had, you know, retirements. So you can see down the center of the page or the payouts to retirees was hundred and forty four thousand versus twenty eight thousand a year ago. So those are so significant things that we are seeing occur. Which yeah, that's kind of unfortunate because I like being able to do that by a million, but I think we're gonna have to we're gonna have to watch that because or we're gonna use that million dollars that I've tried to keep set aside for it, you know. But we'll just have to keep looking at that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, what are you thinking for this year's budget?
I don't know. I it's a good question. I wanna look at maybe year-to-date. It's kind of hard to tell year-to-date the way payroll works, but I one of the things I will look at closer. And that's only one year, so a a million may be it still may be a good estimate for a bit. The next
I mean, a six hundred thousand dollar increase on overtime here.
The overtime.
Um doesn't have to be today, but can we have a a real hearty discussion on contributing factors? Cause I don't know, it's seems like it's worth the chat.
I'm sure that Sheriff F would be happy.
Probably just you we need to talk with, huh?
Yeah, I mean, I can definitely gonna touch on it an hour and come back to it, but
Hey.
Yeah.
Let's come back. Like maybe you can give a brief thing now, but I don't think it's not really fair to jump you
Uh just Maybe at some point.
Some right, yeah, we do.
Yeah, at some point, you know, we yeah, we're gonna need to be able to 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 answer to it as well, right? Like if folks are asking us, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. The next exhibit I'm showing, this is a really detailed one, which I'm not gonna talk about much. This is a format that I think most of you are used to seeing, but it explains the cumulative activity in in the sixty forty fund overtime. And we I went through June of twenty twenty four. To kind of simplify things, I did a different version to budget from that I think will I'm hoping will be a little bit easier to pay attention to and that's the next exhibit that we have. And I've tried to share three years' worth of information on here. So you've got what actually happened in fiscal twenty-three on the left there, just left three columns. And then twenty-four in the center. And I just have the budget for twenty-five didn't I have not I've not really converted anything to actuals in that yet. Cause as you know, we have two pools. Sixty percent of that's required to go to courthouse security and the other forty percent is not. And at this point in time, the board has allocated that to keep to be used by the sheriff's office and that is currently how the forty percent is being used. Um if you remember, as we talked through the budget the the sixty percent side, which covers our courthouse security, we have we've been kind of going in the hole on that here the last few years. And that was when we were expecting to get about three hundred thousand a year in room and board revenue to fund this pot. And if you look at those the top line of the center section for fiscal twenty-four, we only received two hundred and forty-two thousand. That so that revenue took a pretty steep dive in twenty twenty four. Um in talking public safety, it we believe that revenue source is likely to continue declining. So while we have some fund balance there to use, we we may soon approach a time where we are not going to be able to fund everything we currently fund from that pool.
What are some sorry, what are some of the reasons that we expect that to decline? Is it just
Yeah, you know.
Yeah, why is it? Why are we expected?
It it's down hasn't been this slow since four six.
The the big thing on it is, excuse me, there is fewer time servers. There is a span in there where the judges were issuing no ability to pay that we couldn't really collect. We've kind of circled the wagons back on that and have gone through collections in a different manner, which we've again recently just altered. But even that's just not bringing in too terribly much. But the big part is not nearly as many people getting sent to serve time. And even when we do go to collect, we're just not having much luck there. So we're still making efforts on it, but uh the pool is smaller and then the pool of those people paying in that small pool is even smaller, so.
So not as many serving time. But still a capacity for the other
Yeah, actually, this this has been a strange year. We're sitting right around two hundred twenty. We've had usually we're in the two fifty, two sixty range.
Okay.
This year I've been down in the uh two ten, two twenty. I've actually had one my smaller pods close for most of the year, which has helped us a lot on our operating side, but.
So for some of us laypeople, maybe you could explain the difference between a time server and other residents?
So Yeah, so the vast majority of people in the jail are there awaiting trial. They got arrested, whether it be for something simple in O W I or a homicide. Um they're just there until they go to court and the judge jury finds them guilty, sentences them. You can be sentenced to up to one year in jail. Anything one year and under, you're automatically doing in jail. If it's three hundred sixty-seven days, you're going to prison. So for those people that are sentenced up to one year, um we can bill those people. If it's above a year, we don't. And if you're awaiting trial, we don't bill you for that either, so.
So that changed in the two years if that's reduced like about thirty thousand each time?
It's yeah, it's just gone down significantly. And I know I'm around jail about five years now and I guess before I took it over, those numbers were even higher yet.
For that reason?
So it's been on a pretty gradual decline for several years, but the last couple of years, we've just really seen it get hard.
What's the what's the surcharge? The nine percent surcharge?
That's a portion of fine collections that are allocated to the sheriff. I
That's any any citation
I can figure this out speeding tickets or I'm not sure.
Any 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 traffic violation written within the county, whether it was by state patrol, anybody, we get nine percent of that.
Don't panic.
Okay.
It used to be that there was a five-dollar county surcharge on any citation that one of the deputies wrote. Excuse me. Um that went away because there was complaints that if I wrote you a speeding ticket and a Waterloo guy wrote you a speeding ticket, the one from me is gonna be five dollars more. So they leveled that playing field and now just any ticket written in the county, nine percent of it comes back to the county. And we still haven't gotten a real good grasp on exactly how much it's gonna be, exactly when they reimburse us for it.
And that's since twenty or twenty-one, just looking at the
Yeah. Again, that's something that's we don't really have much saying. If there's a couple new troopers out there that go and write a bunch of tickets, then uh the county actually sees a little benefit from it. If if somebody's out there not doing much, then then we don't see anything from it.
And do we uh where does that nine percent go in regards to sixty forty? Is it going to the sixty or is it going to the forty?
Both sixty thirty.
It's it's still splits, okay.
Yep. Yep, if you look at the the budget one exhibit, not the not the legal size one, but the other one, you can see that I've got some in each column, the sixty and the forty.
Oh yeah.
That's why I'm sorry. I don't know how to make that simpler to look at, but I was trying to show you the whole picture and then how much goes into sixty and how much goes into forty.
No. No.
Any efforts we could make when you say collections being a part of it too? Is there anything more we could do from a collections side to try to help and
Not really. I mean, we still uh we hadn't been doing the confessions. Now we're doing an invoice on them. Um when those don't come due, uh we'll start s uh small claims process, go through Mike with that on it coming forward. Um but I know I think the confessions over the last two years, we had about eighty thousand dollars that we could file on. And of that, we filed on, we've collected thirteen thousand dollars of it. So if you're talking six thousand dollars a year, that's that's not gonna help fund a whole lot here for us in the big picture of things.
And I think it's worth pointing out too and correct me if I'm wrong, Dave, but the there's a significant portion of that uh revenue that's still coming in on old matters where they're actually assessed as a border loss restitution and were never part of a confession or a suit process. This is ever since that change in law, this has been declining.
Anything different or unique since you're at the podium now as far as for your department that don't seem different for going forward in the next year's budget?
Um not really. One thing I was gonna mention that we're gonna have to keep an eye on, um earlier this year, the F C C issued a ruling um that the technology companies, communications companies cannot pay a commission back to the jails and prisons that they're in. Um so as you know, our commissary fund right now is we take revenue in through two different streams and it's about fifty fifty. Um about half of that comes through every Snickers and everything that we sell in the jail. And the other half is the commission from our texting, video visits, phone calls, that kind of stuff. So right now, if I know its budget to that site is about three hundred thousand dollars a year. Um the ruling the F C C did earlier this year will take us through March or April of next year. And as it stands right now, we will no longer be able to take that commission, which is again about three hundred thousand a year. Um several states have filed lawsuits on that, even some of the companies have because they're saying the S C C has no right to dictate what we do with our profits. Um so I'm gonna guess that at least gets us stay and that's one thing with the new uh president coming in, they're talking there's a good chance that the S C C ruling gets overturned anyway. But definitely something to keep an eye on because again, that's a lot of things that we buy out of non-tax based funds for the jail that if that dries up, we're gonna have to look for funding elsewhere too. And then if you recall too, last year, we actually bumped the uh projected revenue out of that commissary. Um one thing I kind of caution us on doing it because if we get lucky and our account's strapped, um that revenue goes down with our accounts being as low. We're gonna be have trouble hitting those those projections this year, but but we'll definitely more than make up for that in other areas, whether it be food, medical, all that kind of stuff. So it's still a positive, but when you look at that revenue, it's gonna look shorter. But again, that's because there's fewer people using the services.
And if the expenses should decline too, then if you don't have some people
Oh, mu- much more so than what the revenues will decline. So it's a win-win, obviously. Fewer pe- fewer people in jail is just a win in general, obviously, so.
Sorry.
The number's been a low for a while.
Almost this entire year, we've been sitting that two twenty range, which is very strange. Usually we're two fifty, two sixty, so. And there's been a couple years ago, we were actually have over three hundred with inmates farmed out wherever we could find a bed for them, so. So no, it's been it's been nice and I have no explanation for it really, but I'm not complaining.
Anything else?
Do you guys have anything wanna cover today?
I I have I have a couple more slides, but we can we can get Nate off the hush.
Alright. I guess I guess Linda asked. I did have one other thing. I don't know, Chris, what we talked about last week, could now be a good time for that to bring in. Okay. Sorry, I thought it was done, but I guess I'll say it. Um over the last several years, um Sheriff Thompson has not had a chief deputy outside of the we have three captains and he's just designated one of them as the uh chief deputy. Um in years past, it's always been a different position. Most counties do it as a different position. Um one thing I am gonna do differently is bring that back as a standalone position. Sorry, I'm getting the dry mouth Tim had earlier too.
You dragged on too long for me.
I thought you were gonna be emotional. I might, I'm pretty emotional, I agree. So no, so one thing I am looking to do is I'm gonna promote a chief deputy um that will handle mostly the administrative stuff. And the main reason behind that is of the three captains right now, um three of us generally work fifty to sixty hours a week. Um all of our vacation times are maxed out, all of our sick times are maxed out. We just can't get away. That amount of work's not gonna decrease. The only way to decrease it is to bring a fourth person to help with a lot of the administrative stuff. So I've got Sergeant Jason Toronos right now, who's eligible for lieutenant and then would be captain anyway. I'm gonna bring him up as a chief deputy um under Iowa code. Go with that. Um so you will see an extra administrative body in there. As that chief deputy by code, he's that eighty-five percent of my salary here is the sheriff's salary, soon to be my salary. So that will be in addition to the three captains. So that's one thing left to talk about on the salary and expense side of things. And then one thing I was gonna ask too, we're currently allotted three captains. Obviously, that chief deputy spot is not a civil service spot, so if something should happen to me in a year, two years, Jason Toronos would be at the at the whim of the next sheriff to keep him there or drop him back down. I would ask permission to add es- essentially add a fourth captain spot. Won't cost any extra because he's already at chief deputy at eighty-five percent. So I'd like to make him a captain just in case something does happen to me. He's got the peace of mind that uh somebody new is not gonna come in and bump him back down. I am looking at a new schedule for the staff. I don't know if it'll go through or not. If it does, it'd be by next fall. And under that one, there would be a good chance that I would need one less sergeant too, so that would offset some of the savings with that. But again, that's that's still gotta be a whole union discussion. That's that's probably close to a year down the road if it happens, but.
There's a way to, I don't know if there is, um when we look at that fourth how to provide that protection if there's maybe some if we can explore if there's how to provide that protection, if there's maybe some, if we can explore if there's other options, so that we're not creating a position in the event that we lose some institutional knowledge. And all of a sudden, well, we've got this fourth spot, we gotta fight, right, not saying you, but maybe the next person, I I think there's maybe just if there's a way to explore other options beyond creating that position to allow the certain the the security or that promotion, I I understand where you're going, but I'm I'm also a little nervous about just tacking on another assuming that we're gonna keep in mind that that's the intent.
Right, no, I understand that, um one thing the code pretty well spells out, the chief deputy serves at the pleasure of the sheriff, um and then
Yeah.
if if the if I go away, a new sheriff comes in, he he would fall back to his original spot, then a new person comes in, so. So I don't know is there is a way to protect it other than the civil service protect it, but. And again, I said that can be a discussion further down the road, but I just wanted to ask if there's anything changes coming up and
That's what I'm gonna.
operationally, I'm not really looking at anything changing other than, that's my big one, um we're gonna have three captains moving on and a couple lieutenants, so there's gonna be so much change just inherently with the new people and new positions. I'm not looking to reinvent the wheel, but.
For the services that we provide to other community, for for individual communities throughout the time. Then are we at, are we gonna be at a spot where we need that, at least look at what that fee schedule looks like, so cover expense?
That could.
I don't know that, I don't know that it feels like it hasn't necessarily maybe kept up where our costs have increased.
Yeah, that's definitely something we could revisit, um I think really Raymond is about the only one that we're doing, so even if we increased it
Sure.
again, it's gonna be minimal enough that we can certainly make sure that it's a fair number, but
Sure.
I don't think we're gonna save our budget on it or anything, yeah.
Just give them a lot.
Is it with Raymond and what Elkhorn, I was trying to think of.
Evansdale took over Elkhorn several years ago.
Oh yeah, I was gonna say the two, yeah, I was just thinking that are treated a little bit differently from a he and may perspective as like as services he provides Raymond and Evansdale goes to Elkhorn, yeah, they their property values weren't used for it, I think last year. There, I know you said more slides than I was gonna say, and we'd ask staff too, like same questions really, if there's anything like looking at your years differently, your budget or something you like to bring to our attention or remind us of or something that changes, we've got that five year plan. I want I I know we'll be looking at that at some point, if there is gonna be changes in, yeah.
That's the capital. Yeah, I've never some of those.
And some's been asked to update that, so.
That much of that changes, so that's.
Sorry, just while you're up standing there.
Yeah.
The nav care?
Yes.
Because we're lower on inmates, is that number adjusted at all, or is that pretty much locked in towards that?
Pretty locked in, that number is based off of two hundred fifty inmates. Um which unfortunately is right now, we're not under, I think there are some services where might save us a little bit, but for the most part, unfortunately no, and that was Mike even asked me about that last year, we did the contract with two fifty is good, and I said we're usually two sixty, two seventy above, so two fifty is pretty fair and and of course, we've been at two twenty, two thirty this year, so.
Is the other, is the cutoff two twenty or something like that too, if we wouldn't have done two fifty, was it, was there a two twenty or?
There wasn't really a number thrown out on that.
Was there a two hundred, okay.
That was kinda where.
Not that we'd ever, yeah, yeah.
Is that, yeah. The main thing we see um savings on is food service, because there we do pay by the meal, so at least on that one, we're
Yeah.
we're saving there.
Six eight.
Thank you.
Cathy, you're roaring, you have anything to, as far as your departments, you want kind of end their attention or?
Yeah, um.
Good news only.
No, sorry.
Yeah, as far as the maintenance's uh operating budget, obviously uh you know, with the addition of the uh former E P I building, the new V A building, um you know, there's going to be uh an expense uh a new line item in for that facility once that's up and running. Um I think uh as I sent out a uh email the other day, uh we are working with Mid American, we feel like uh that facility is gonna be about as efficient as as we could possibly make it, so uh the yearly ex- uh cost on that's anticipated right around ten thousand dollars, so obviously that's gonna have an impact on my operating budget. The other location is the uh former Ray Mount building. And uh you know, now that we're at budget time, I know originally we threw out some numbers uh for some of the uh upgrades that we'd like to see on that facility. Uh more than likely, what we're gonna do now is uh talk about it at budget time and uh see if we can't fine tune some of those numbers and get uh get that a little bit in a more narrowed down, um.
We started about three fifty or?
Yeah, right around three hundred, I think is what we anticipated, um. Uh you know, a- assuming the use of that building would be uh to accommodate uh you know, our our vehicles, uh some of uh engineering's vehicles along with our Sanders, and the the part where uh where we get into additional costs is if we do house our Sanders over there, then we need to uh really take a hard look at um safety and sprinkler system and fire alarm panels and all that good stuff, so we need to kind of figure out if that's the route we really want to go, or if we just wanna uh call it storage for our smaller fleet. So that's something we're kind of working through, uh with all the ARPA projects, that one's kind of taken a backseat, but uh now with budget coming up, we'll we'll start fine tuning that number hopefully a little bit. Then we've got uh uh we've got the last uh uh bid opening for the ARPA projects this afternoon. Uh but the one we had a few weeks ago with the server room, if you recall, I believe I had sent out an email. Uh it's it's been some time ago now, but uh we are setting up the uh new server room um with the anticipation that uh it would leave us space to create a new office area for the I T department. Um so we'll need at some point to get some direction as to what the board's appetite is for that particular project, because uh what that would do, move I T over, then that would allow us to expand the board of supervisors area. Um get permanent homes for uh the folks uh for individual that's in the in the lobby there. Uh or yeah, in the main lobby, but um so I just need to, at some point, it might be a work session possibly uh to kind of talk about what the appetite is moving forward with regards to that. Um and then obviously uh with the county attorneys, um uh what you know, there's been some, we've had a small committee uh put together, it's kind of in a standstill now. But uh just looking at what the uh outlook for for that particular uh department is going to be, and there's some some things that have transpired here, so. Uh capital wise, my five year plan probably will stick to pretty close to that, uh as far as uh capital projects go. Um with the, we anticipate uh this next year to be pretty busy, so um we're we're really taking a taking a look at uh what's what's real critical. Um and probably will try to streamline that just a bit.
Just just remove a few of those, you mean, maybe that's what you.
Possibly, um there's 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 there may be one or two in there that uh we might push out to the next year. Yeah, the electrical one is the one that comes to mind for the courthouse, cause that is a very, very large project. Um and uh I think our focus is probably going to be more so on the the four projects that are gonna be ARPA related. And I think that might spread us just a bit thin if we try to pull that one off during the same time. Anyway, that's that's maintenance kind of in a snapshot.
Timeline, I'm just curious on the timeline, when you're talking about that server room and that kind of, would that that be twenty sixth then?
Yeah, yeah, so so we'll bring that uh on the third, we'll bring those bids to the board for approval. Um once that's approved, uh you know I I think we had a September twenty twenty believe we had a September twenty twenty five on that one for completion date, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah, so.
Okay. Curious what you're following.
And that that one will go, uh that that's not uh determined on whether or not we do the I T space, that will that is a project in its own, it's just we set it up in a way that sets us up for uh creating a space for I T uh down the road, so.
And is that on the uh F Y twenty six board area, is that is that where that's noted in the?
I I don't know if that number is.
I think, yeah, we hadn't noted that hundred thousand you're talking about.
We had a hundred thousand in twenty five and and nine fifty and
A hundred thousand is per design. Right.
just just seeing if that's roughly in that.
I I'm not sure, but I I suspect it would not actually cover it, I.
Sure, sure. But but is that the intent of that nine fifty? It was towards that, whether.
That was more towards redoing the board's side of the hallway, so I honestly don't know that redoing the I T side of the hallway
Yeah, what.
Okay.
is necessarily been budgeted yet, so that might be something we would be adding.
Got it. Okay.
And if maybe the million isn't right, and maybe it couldn't cover it, I I'm not sure.
Yeah, those numbers were pulled off of the assessment that we did a few years back, and then what I did back in uh March of twenty twenty four, I sent the board an email uh just outlining uh some uh estimated cost uh for projects like that. I think it came in at two million and that was moving I T over and redoing that space uh for I T and then the board of supervisors office area. Um and that really was a number that uh came from uh a cost per square footage that we used for the the uh High Crest project that we're working on, so we feel that's uh in the neighborhood. About two million dollars for all of that. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Feel like I might be missing something, but.
Probably, I'm thinking that too, but.
You probably costing some more money for just.
Yeah, I mean that, again, this is just a quick snapshot, I mean as we go through this process, we'll get that more fine tuned.
Yeah, it's just kind of, yeah, helping as we before we go, Kathy, were you gonna talk about your?
Uh I know that Michelle did have a few more slides too, right?
Oh she does, yeah.
Great, I'm sure I'm much longer.
Oh, I'm good, now to go on my. I just wanna be sure, cause Kathy had her building and some of those things in there as well, so.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's still on the drawing board, but no, please go ahead, John.
I was just gonna these are it's difficult to simplify all our department budgets, but I and I primarily did it with a chart here, but this is just an attempt to kind of show you how department budgets come department actual expenses compared to budget as of October thirty first. Also them are fine, I mean we're, it's difficult here the first part of the year, because most of the things paid in July relate to the prior fiscal, so um we should probably be running, we should run it under budget all year till you get to June, so I don't know, but I see any concerns right now necessarily.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, it was just like, I know we're only four months in, but it was just like anything that.
Yeah.
Looks.
Yep, yeah. And the sheriffs, I mean, if you look at that, there that's more than twenty five percent of their budget, they've gotten some vehicles and things in that kind of skew that right now. Any other questions about that one, or should we go to revenue?
Just helps, thanks for adding the, something to say the budget to where we were.
Well, I was it just makes us so small, but um I tried.
Yeah.
Um same thing with revenue and I, the board one, I was like, why is that so much revenue, well, that is recognizing ARPA
Yeah.
as we spend it on projects and I seriously see those projects all in one spot, so that that's why that looks and it also includes proceeds of a bond issue, which we may or may not have, so those are just things that were included in the original budget. There are things that look a little behind here, but again, we're early in the year, I think hopefully those will pick up for the most part as we move through the year. And the other item that I have I have an estimated timeline for the budget process. So departments have been able to work in the New World Software since November sixth. Um today, we're having this budget work session. I'm hoping I kind of just picked this date out of the air, that maybe we'll have state information by December tenth. Um I I haven't had anything, I haven't even had an email from them yet, last year it was late, they were, it wasn't released till January twelfth and that was cause of all the law changes, so I'm anticipating that won't happen, but there aren't even announcements out about trainings yet which seems kind of surprising to me. And Tim will of course have our property valuations to us by January second, so that we know our, we can start figuring out at least what our paycheck is.
Have we got those in December or something? Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
They like to, yes, dump them on us poor people right before Christmas, so we can't enjoy our vacations soon, right?
I I would really like to have them done by before Christmas, so that I could enjoy my vacation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Tim, me too.
And I really don't want him until twenty sixth. I don't like that anywhere, we don't have to wait for it even, yeah.
Okay, so. So hope, we should, we should be able to, I think, get through all the department presentations and things sometime in that January timeframe. And then the board um would have basically February more or less, little less, I guess, to actually make your choices. So that we can, we ha- as I understand it for this year, we are, last year, we were requested to submit our original budget for the first hearing by March fifth, I believe now it's set in stone that we must have it by March fifth, so. And then we also need to publish that in the paper at some point, and it and then it'll be, takes a couple weeks to get it to the paper, get it published before we can have that hearing, we have to have that hearing before we can go to the next hearing, they they still have that dual hearing stuff in there. Um so they still want statements to be sent out to all the taxpayers, and they've really done a disservice to us, because they're assuming things are gonna go up ten percent in evaluation, I think, right, isn't that what it is?
Yeah, the.
Go ahead.
So so that statement, the front part of that statement sent out information about what cities, counties and school districts were proposing for their budgets. All very valuable information, they told people when your budget hearings were, no problem with that. The back part of that tried to anticipate what it would mean to a typical homeowner and business owner, and last year, they didn't take into account what was like an average twenty percent increase in property values, so the statement made it look like all your budgets were gonna cut people's taxes by fifteen percent which we all know is not what happened. Um so in order to try to correct that for next year, they decided they arbitrarily add a ten percent increase in value for that calculation. Unfortunately, it's not a revaluation year, most people aren't going to see any increase in value in their property, so now it's going to tell you, you're going to see a big tax increase, even though you probably won't. Um I I I don't know if there's a better way for them to do that, but maybe we had a lot of phone calls about that in March.
You're gonna probably get them again, yeah. So so that we have, so once we publish, then we've got to wait for that whole statement to get mailed out and people have to have some time to absorb it before we can set our real, like our real hearing. Um which then can't be until mid mid to later April, is just how the deadlines fall. And we must be done and filed with the state by April thirtieth, so. No matter how organized we are now, we we will be waiting for those March and April dates, that's one of the hard things about the new budget process. And that is all I have.
Typically, we're on the Tuesdays and Thursdays, but that kind of works, and if everybody.
Right, now we're gonna. I think so.
Till week's end.
Okay.
We're running kind of long today, but Kathy and I know Caitlin's here too, if you want to see
I can play too.
kind of uh overview, please, first.
I will be very brief, so I this uh budget session, we are going to focus on, of course, our building, how do we get more money into our fund balance for our building? We are pushing as much as we can eligible projects into our one sixty seven, the local option sales tax fund, so we are trying to free up money, things that we've paid for in the past out of our secondary road fund, we're trying to push as much as we can into the the local option sales tax fund, and so that we can accumulate a larger fund balance. Towards the end of this budget meetings, we'd like to talk to you about contributing to a sinking fund, starting a sinking fund, talking about that again, and maybe creating a separate savings account for us to to help us with the building.
Thank you.
Um in terms of the public health budget, the Board of Health meets on the eighteenth of December, that's when. Um in terms of the public health budget, the Board of Health meets on the eighteenth of December. That's when we're going to propose our budget to them. Um and so kind of looking at the timeline, I was trying to plug in if that fits in the timeline. I hope it does. Um I don't anticipate a lot of uh changes. We do have one new major revenue source related to uh opioid uh prevention work that is um fully funding uh it's full it's fully funding itself. It's that hundred and sixty thousand for the um opioid data to action through the Iowa Department of Health and Human Services. That's really the only major change to our budget. Um I do anticipate uh capital requests similar to last year for for vehicles. I know there's been some discussion about lease versus purchasing and so if there's um guidance on that uh that you'd like us to consider, that would be great but I think that's the only outstanding thing that would be helpful to have input on so.
Alright, are there any other department heads that that want to write a overview today?
Good morning. I just wanted to touch on something Larry referenced. The user fees that county recorders and many county offices are getting are not keeping up with inflation. What we get to keep in the counties much less than surrounding states. That's why I'm working very hard to get the recorder's modernization effort passed. I'm reaching out to stakeholders. I've reached out to our legislators. This would projections early projections are increased revenues just from our recording fees, three hundred thousand dollars in one year for doing no more recording than we're currently doing. So I'm working really hard to get this passed.
Feelings on it.
You know it it there's lots of support. Uh we have a lobbyist working and she's um working with the recorders and they're really making sure we all do our homework and reach the people that we need to and the stakeholders are very positive because there's a lot of good technology advancements that are gonna also take place when it passes so if you have any questions, please let me know. Thank you.
Any other department heads, local officials wanted to write a today?
You got anything Amanda different about your budget? You'd like to? Don't wanna miss you.
No, um for HR, we don't have anything major but obviously we're helping the finance to get all the salary and benefit information in for everyone so that departments like uh public health can their boards can review that information ahead of time. We're looking at you know making that you know pretty close to what we expected to be with uh things like turnover. Um things like uh hiring new hires into roles at a lower step than what a retirement would be leaving at a higher step. Um you know human resources in particular, I don't anticipate really any changes. We have a pretty minor budget. Most of ours is salaries. Um we do have training that the board um allowed for um and increasing that. We've been trying to maximize that. Um we have a few software things that I'm gonna have to shuffle around a little bit with IT um with some of our new software implementation of onboard. Um and that's the coming from the applicant tracking and then uh speaking right into the payroll system but nothing major. Just trying to get all the right information in the right places for departments to come before you. So.
That's right, because the salary do it seem like we usually have that some of the first things that everybody wants to plug in, right? So.
Yep, they're getting ready to do that. I will say comp board um since there was a decision to I guess dissolve that. I'll still be providing that information with the top ten counties excluding Polk um as we usually do and it will be for elected officials, department heads. Um but that will be a little different this year as there won't be a recommendation coming from a comp board. Um I don't know Mike if you have any inputs on that but something we'll probably need to be looking into to make sure we're following I would code. Um but certainly we'll be uh looking at what the back the blue requires in that we do compare um the sheriff's salary to those that are um comparable as it's outlined in that way and then it'll be free to the board to set those salaries um for those rules so. But yeah, any questions at all from us so?
Alright, thank you.
When when does board anticipate having that meeting where we're going to be deciding salaries?
You asked that today?
Uh for it it's a little ways off yet, right?
Wait up. I know we kind of we can push it though a little ways
Yep.
since it's not gonna be the comp board.
But we need to incorporate that into budgets so I don't want to push it off budget honestly.
Yeah.
That that's kind of what I was driving.
Well, it usually follows the trend of kind of where we're at with some of the others as well. So it's not too bad because we don't want too much from them.
Yeah.
Uh in general, we're gonna have to follow that.
So we just have to make sure we've done all the homework for it that they require us to do since we don't have a comp board.
Sure.
The components and but Amanda.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Our workload.
I think for salaries, so all of the most of our salaries are known. Union contractors set till fiscal year twenty seven so
Yeah.
there's you know a smaller portion elected officials even being smaller than the regular non-bargaining. But usually we get to that end of January. I I mean I I it's not the first thing we talk about.
Now what has been in the past, right, is that you all give that to the comp board and then the comp board maneuvers and does that. So really
Deliberate, yep.
we would anticipate having that information at the time you would have typically given it to the comp board so we should have it within sooner than we would normally make a decision on the hour.
Exactly.
Like next month.
Exactly.
Yep. So yeah, so what we do, we just provide you know an average and kind of where um and it's it's as of July one twenty twenty-four. So it doesn't necessarily you know say what those counties are giving the elected officials for fiscal year twenty-five. It just shows how you compare um as of this fiscal year. That's that's what we provided to comp board and then um yeah based on that they kind of come up with a recommendation. So, yep.
Two of the reasons.
So we'll be getting that out but um and then yeah but the actual decision and discussion and kind of approval happens typically end of January to early February.
Yeah, we just need to just take some estimates and the budget's bigger than.
So. Yep.
Okay, real quick. My budget's really simple compared to most people's so right on target for this fiscal year so I'm really not looking to make a lot of changes for next fiscal year, just increasing the income guidelines so just adding just a li- little small portion in shelter and utilities and then just um requesting an increase for the agencies, usually a three percent for that. Other than that, it'll pretty much stay the same as what it is this fiscal year. I was a little nervous July, August and September. We just exploded this fiscal year so I was really starting to get nervous but that has leveled off so I think we'll be right on target to finish good this fiscal year. That's it.
Anything else for the work sessions today?
Should probably throw one more thing at you here. Just the uh the evidence building that's kind of been floating around for going on a couple years now. Um with Waterloo PD, City Hall moving over to the Courier Building. The police department is going with them but they will not allow the lab to be in that building for the police department's lab. So they are pretty much one hundred percent getting a new lab. Um I've met with Chief Duncan and they've got an architect working on kind of what they want for their building. Um hoping to go in and collaborate services there to save us some money on it. The problem is they have probably at least six or eight, if not more, people that will actually be working out of that building. Um so they're gonna have office space for eight to ten people. They're gonna have they've got we've got ten percent of the amount of evidence that they have. So the building that they're looking at building is probably gonna be an eight to ten million dollar building, I would guess. Um they went in kind of hoping we would go half and half with them on a new building and I'm like well if we can do the whole thing that we need for one to one and a half, I have trouble saying that. I'm all for collaborating services if we can but if it's gonna cost us three or four times, it's not. So so I am working with Waterloo on that. I don't know where they're gonna land, what they're gonna land on us as far as expectations. But at some point I will need to get kind of a number from the board that I can take to them and say if you do this, we can be in for this much on it but obviously we're not going half and half on a building.
Are they close to finalizing numbers that offer themselves or they just don't know where?
No, they had we uh up two weeks ago they had an architect here that was just taking up a wish list of what they want um and what we would need in it and stuff and like I said the what they want and what they need is far greater than what we do. Um we would still reap some benefits obviously using some of those personnel. They would be able to work for us a little bit so have no problem if we had to slightly overpay for our share because we would still get some return on that investment but obviously not to the tune of an extra three or four million dollars but but just so you know, that's something we are looking at and I'm working on with the city and hopefully we can make something work out but uh like I said, at some point I'll need to come and say so I can go to them and say yep, we're good for X amount of dollars or we've gotta go back on our own or whatever so.
Anything else for the work session today? Not to your reports or information for the board, uh we do have the public health um uh this we're just looking for two of us to volunteer reviews.
Yes, I'm obviously you as liaison. I think you want to be so.
Yeah, I'm I'm happy to do so and.
But so I just might because you guys probably a pretty good feel of what they needed on the board member too so.
Yeah. Yeah.
I would be interested to jump on.
Okay, we'll work with Lori and have that scheduled to work soon. Uh the other thing I wanted to bring up was the the meeting for the week of you know the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth.
Yeah.
Um I was gonna propose that we just not meet that week. Um does it be it will.
Is that is that an issue? That's I thought just once I remember I thought Grant saying something about well you have to pay bills but is there a way to work around that him or Michelle that could pay bills just a little differently? You know without the meeting, just do it. Anybody? Not sure.
Okay.
But otherwise, you know, I mean I I would.
I I want a fair question to find out how if they're gonna have staff to process them anyway.
Cause it's important. I suppose if we're gonna move it to a Monday, if we even moved it to a Monday or not at all, it's requiring some kind of notification or changes, right?
Um we'd have to let us get back to you about that.
I mean even if even if we were to just not add additional agenda items, worst case, we all jump on it soon and.
Yeah. You know.
Be nice for some staff not to have to deal with agendas and setting up schedules and doing those things. So if we can skip a week, I think that would.
That's true. Yeah, that'd be.
I mean.
Yeah.
If we can, so I mean.
Sure.
Yeah.
I thought that right away. I'm just like.
I think we're supposed to say make we don't.
We are open the thirty-first always and the Lori threw out you know.
Open the thirty-first, we open the twenty-third.
We always are.
The presumably we're open the twenty-fifth.
Oh yeah. Well, the two the holidays for the county, the the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth this year.
So the Monday, we would be open on Monday if we
Yeah, so we would be open. Yeah, yeah. Choose to do it then, yeah.
Needed to.
Yeah.
So that's why I said we can.
I'm I'm certainly open to just.
Doing it Monday and.
Just give it a chance if we have to just we have to look into it on Monday or we'll talk to.
That is a choice too. It's it's fine.
Yeah.
So Mondays are backup.
Yeah.
I know but okay. Alright, Monday if we need.
Alright, any other reports or information? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, I shouldn't have.
Alright, this meeting is adjourned.